All right. Welcome to our local planning agency meeting. We'll be having a quick local planning agency meet. Well, maybe quick. Sometimes they're quick, sometimes they're not. But we'll have a local planning agency meeting. And then immediately following that, we'll have our regular agenda. So call the local planning agency meeting to order. If we can please call the roll.
Chair Bright Cruz.
Here.
Vice Chair Albritton.
Present.
Board Member Hartman.
Here.
Board Member Jablonsky.
Here.
Board Member Kozinski.
Yes.
We have a quorum there.
Great, thank you. If you please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have one item on our agenda aside from the minutes. If we can please call, read item number three into the record.
This is a resolution of the local planning agency of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, recommending that the town council adopt an amendment to section 090-100 of the Unified Land Development Code entitled roadway capacity, construction and design standards prohibiting the use of phosphogypsum to create or repair town or private roads providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. I don't know, Councilman Kozinski, did you want to say a couple of words about this? I appreciate that you brought this up.
Yeah, this has been an issue that when, during the last legislative session, there was a House Bill 1119 that had passed that allows phosphogypsum to be used in, as an additive to asphalt. And this material is a byproduct of the process of making fertilizer. And I guess the folks that make fertilizer wanted something to do, they can do with their byproducts. I don't know. But what they did is with their influence in Tallahassee, they got this bill through and it will allow phosphogypsum to be used in road construction, which contains nuclear-type radioactive materials. So this is something that I think we do not want in our town. And I would like to have something like this also. If it passes, I would like something like this to be sent to Broward County to let them know where we stand on this.
Awesome. Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
Any council comment on this item or board comment?
Just have a question about it. We're limiting it to town and private roads. Is there anything we can do on the county roads like Griffin Road out here or I-75? It's probably a question for Keith.
Yeah, I doubt you have jurisdiction to control that, but I'm happy to look into it.
27 as well, if we can. Thank you. One of the things, just to add to David's comments, it emits radon gas. Yep. Everywhere else in the United States, they try to get rid of radon gas and we're going to start importing it. Makes no sense.
Makes no sense. Makes no sense. Well, you know, it seeped right down into our
Water.
Our water table. It's, we seem to be intent on ruining our water. All right, so this is great. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Please call the item.
Board Member Hartman.
Yes.
Board Member Jablonsky.
Yes.
Board Member Kozinski.
Yes.
Vice Chair Albritton.
Yes.
And Chair Bright Cruz.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And then we have two sets of minutes to be approved. Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any public changes, additions, corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, if we can please call.
This is for both of them?
This is for both.
Board Member Hartman.
Yes.
Board Member Jablonsky.
Yes.
Board Member Kozinski.
Yes.
Vice Chair Albritton.
Yes.
Chair Bright Cruz.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned. Okay, let me call to order the regular council meeting. If we can please call the roll.
Mayor Bright Cruz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Albritton.
Present.
Council Member Hartman.
Here.
Council Member Jablonsky.
Here.
Council Member Kozinski. We have a quorum there.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, there are four public speakers tonight, and I'll call them up in the order in which the cards were received.
Thank you.
Mary Ann Allen, followed by Wes Clark, followed by Tim Wilder, followed by John Garotti.
Mary Ann. I have a question. Is this a, I want to debrief for the incinerator task force. Does that fall under the same rules? Because I have a little bit.
Actually, that would probably be a board report if the mayor is so inclined.
Right, right. Yeah, let's do that under board reports. That's a good idea.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we'll start Mr. Clark. Wes, you're up. Okay, perfect.
Okay.
Mr. Wilder.
Good evening. Tim Wilder, Durango Estates, Pembroke Pines. I'm here tonight in concern with the ongoing discussions of the incinerator out, not only, now we're finding out about Dade County, right there at 27 and Chrome, and also the Sheridan and US 27 location. Now, it's been brought to my attention, this authority that's been going on to trying to get formed out of the Broward County level. We need some of the cities that have joined to slow the roll and back up and let the taxpayers know what it's costing them to join this authority annually. And I'm being told that you guys are paying upwards of $10,000 a year for multiple years once you sign on to this, just so you can have a seat on the table. Look, in my view, you'll always have a seat at the table. You don't need to pay taxpayer money to have a seat at the table to discuss something that's as important as this project with the incinerators. Now, I know our commission finally has come to their senses and has voted against joining, last I knew, the trash commission. And we need a few other cities to do the same, to stop this in its tracks, to have more time for the people to be brought aware of this whole thing and what's going on with their tax dollars. I think you'll find that when people do find out, at least everybody I've spoke to, and I mean everybody, not one has been for it, are livid to find out that this went on. And our representative has never even told us that this was going on and had been going on for, you know, a few years prior. So we can't go backwards, but we can go forward, in my view. I'm here tonight to ask you guys to bail out on the final vote here in a couple of weeks of joining this authority and ask your residents, give them time to know what's going on here. And some of the other cities' residents to find out what's going on here. And I'll guarantee you, you'll have a different answer. If you guys let this thing go through and they find out after the fact, man, I'm telling you what, you're going to have some aggravated resonance. Just my view. So we'd appreciate all the help you guys can do. And please, in a few weeks, vote to get out of this authority. And let's sit down and rethink this with the Bergerons and other people that need to be involved in this, if not already, and get some common sense here. We know we have a trash problem. There's no doubt about it. They've overbuilt the state. They wouldn't listen. They won't stop building. So this problem from 30 years ago is now groomed into the monster that some of us talked about back then. So here we are. At the end of the, we've got to get it right. Failure's not an option. So let's slow down and take a look at this and move forward from there. And thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening, council ladies and gentlemen. John Garotti, 162nd Avenue. I'm here tonight speaking about my personal. I got a letter here, the special meeting minutes of the town council back on June 29th. It's a three-page notice, you know, it was noticed for all the residents or however you guys do this process. I'm pretty shocked of the support I got regarding my personal case. And I'm not going to get into details, but a few town hall meetings ago, I made an outburst in the back regarding the veterinarians case. Oh, Bob. The, what was talked about that day here was the total opposite of what happened in court. And when I read this, meeting minutes by our town attorney over here expressing what the judge's opinion was, I have the transcript. I can send it to you via FedEx. Each and every resident should have it. What happened there and what's here are two different things completely. It was even discussed that he can't open his clinic anymore. He can open it first thing in the morning, unfortunately for you. But this all boils down to why a town with 7,000 residents decides to go to war with their residents? And it says in these minutes that our town attorney says that the majority of problems are caused by home-based businesses. I've barked on this stool up here how many times about get something in front? Maybe Julio can have a separate department, a separate something. Address your business problem. Fix it, you know, because uninformed residents are going to create havoc. It happens, new residents or old residents. But I don't like that one thing gets spoken on here, because there's people on YouTube watching this. And what was said here, and I was reprimanded for having the outburst, which shouldn't do that, you should behave yourself, but what happened in that courtroom, I was there. And what it says in here, it's the flip side. Like, why can't we be honest? I mean, what are we in? It's not 1960, it's the year 2023. We have a lot of wealthy residents. We have a lot of residents that pay a lot of money out here. Why should we have this kind of rhetoric? Look, read this. Special meeting minutes of the town council. You guys are going after licensed businesses, dog businesses. My business had to go through a dramatic process. For what? I'm licensed today. I got my permits on the wall. Got to pay 24 grand. For what reason? What is the fine cure? Absolutely nothing. Because it could have just been, hey, Steve, we need to make sure you live there. Communication, that's all it takes. Bruno's Happy Dogs, another case. It's going to end in litigation. Fully licensed business, approved, signed off. What is wrong with this town? Why are we taking this approach? And then I come in here today, I think I'm running out of time, but if you give me 30 seconds, I'll finish. We're discussing more proactive issues on code enforcement. How much more drama do we need? Unless it's just a matter of money with legal fees, and then I can't say anything because that's a business. That's his business, and I get that. But that shouldn't be what a town's all about. We can't go after every resident just because we want our billing for legal fees to just be astronomical. That's how I see it. I know you're shaking your head, Steve, but you've never been on this side of the coin. And if you did, you'd understand my frustration. I got fined for doing the same thing I'm licensed for today. For what reason? Because there's no communication in our town. And it's not just to grind our town attorney. It's just why? Just give us a reason. What is the purpose of hiring attorneys and going through this war with our own town? But that's all I got to say tonight.
Thank you.
Mayor, we have three late additions, if you don't mind, I'll add them in. Kenneth Farkas, followed by Vice Mayor Seifel, followed by Final Speaker Newell Hollingsworth.
Good evening. My name's Kenneth Farkas, Pembroke Pines, 199th Avenue. Basically, Southwest Ranches, just six houses south of the gate. I'm here tonight to talk about the incinerator. And basically, I'm asking to take the SWWG hostage. After speaking to the mayor who gave me more time than I deserved, I realized that while this is a county-wide problem, and I don't agree with the structure, to that point, I emailed all of the council members today, about 30 minutes ago, a report that was provided by the SWWG to the Broward Commission in March of this past year, where they detail in, in detail, the way they're going to source it, build it, and fund a waste-to-energy plant that'll be on the landfill, that if you're worried about the roads, well, you better wear a face mask because you're not going to be able to breathe if they get away with that. So in the two minutes I have left, you're more than welcome to read that. They go in detail. I tried to send you a highlighted copy. Unfortunately, that would have been too big for your inboxes, but it's right there on the front page, and it gets better as you read on. So I also sent to you the way, the problem that I have with the SWWG is it's being run by the Broward League of Cities, which I understand we want representation in, but they've never undertaken anything like this in 67 years, ever. Everybody speaks to the Palm Beach model as the gold standard. Why? Because every year, they are the best county at recycling. Well, their board, who runs the solid waste authority, are elected officials. In their case, county commissioners. Now, I know the mayor said to me before, we don't want county commissioners telling us how to deal with our trash because they're going to build an incinerator. Well, if you sit there and demand, since you have to provide the trash, that there's representation from cities, like the nine, only nine representatives out of 28 that are going to be on the SWWG, not all 28, you're not all going to get a voice, nine at the most, then you'll have representation in the same way. The difference is, those people will be up for elections. And if they don't do what the voters want, they'll be put out of office. In the short term, I'd request that you join, hopefully Pembroke Pines, Hollendale Beach, Pompano Beach, and hopefully soon, Merrimarm and Weston, in creating more than 25% of people that oppose the SWWG, not permanently, but until they put on the record that they will not recommend nor build an incinerator at the Broward landfill. Because without the support of these cities, and that 25%, they don't get ratified, they don't come into existence. And believe me, they've been working four years for this. They're not going to give it up now. Just look at what Mayor Ross did when he was voted off the SWWG on August 26th. Read that transcript. It's quite entertaining. So I would say, since they've pushed us to the 11th hour, and this must be done before this is ratified at the end of the month, that is a solution that will eliminate the possibility of an incinerator in our backyard, poisoning all of us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming out, Iris. Appreciate it.
I'm sorry?
Thank you for coming out.
Oh, thank you for allowing me to come in to speak tonight. It's always a pleasure to see you all in a more formal setting than where we usually are at a luncheon, you know, some group. But I am here tonight, I am the vice mayor of the city of Pembroke Pines, but I want to make it very clear that I'm here representing just myself. I'm not speaking for the board. I'm speaking for myself as an elected official. And I want to share with you my concerns about this incinerator that's being proposed. I don't really, I don't know how many of you were around at the time, in the area at the time, but a number of years ago, there was a group, and it was called the Resource Recovery Board. And I will tell, shaking your heads, right? So I will tell you that reading through what is being proposed today, this ILA, it is almost a mimic of what that Resource Recovery Board was. And for those of you that know about it or were students of it, will remember the fact that it came across as it was going to be this end-all, it was going to be the answer to garbage, and it was going to make everything perfect, and everything was good. What actually ended up happening was a handpicked, chosen group of folks started running that, the Resource Recovery Board. There was a lot of money that changed hands, there were a lot of accusations, there were a lot of things. And I don't, I don't want to speak to that because I don't have specifics documentation of that, but that's what was out there. It didn't take very long, I think it was only a few years, until the Resource Recovery Board was totally dismantled. Money was nowhere to be found that had been somewhere before. And it kind of fell into that crevice where we just don't talk about that anymore. But the point I'm trying to make is that what is being planned here is almost a duplicate of that happening, and I'm very concerned about that. My other concern is, and this is what I would just respectfully ask you all to consider is, and I understand, I know where your vote was on this, and I appreciate your vote, but what I would ask you to please reconsider is, in that ILA, which I'm not, I'm not sure that I really think that putting this something together is a bad idea to try to see how we can collectively come up with a solution. Because garbage is a problem, and it's going to be a problem for us for a long time until we figure it out. But what I'm asking you is to, in, please push either, either take back what, and I said I wasn't going to ask you to do that, but either take back your support of that or have your support be contingent upon language being included in the ILA that says, under no way, shape, form, or fashion, will we proceed with an incinerator. I think our residents all over have spoken about their concerns about an incinerator, not only for health reasons, but certainly environmental reasons and any number of fiscal reasons that they talk about. So again, it's, an incinerator is not the way to go these days. It is certainly not the future for garbage. There are so many other opportunities out there for us to handle garbage, handle that huge volume of garbage, but do it in a more, in a better way that protects our health, our children, our grandchildren, and everybody coming up. And guess what, folks? How about our environment? You all are huge stewards of the environment out here. Look at your insignias, your trees, your everything else. You are, you are country people, and that is fabulous. But you're not going to have that if, in fact, you don't protect the environment and you don't make sure that our water is safe, our air is safe. And by putting an incinerator to burn and push it out into the air, first off, it's old hat, it doesn't work anymore. We need to be telling this group, spend this money that, they asked Pembroke Pines for $600,000. I don't know how much you all had to pay. But we're looking at $2 or $4 million as a total of that to come up with, to come up with a plan. Surely, they can come up with something better than an incinerator by going out and checking all these other ways that it happens. There are other ways that it can be. So again, I'm not, I respect your position on this. I'm just asking you to consider, my request to you is that your support and your vote for this be tweaked to include that in that ILA, that they would not consider or not have any discussion or move in any directions towards an incinerator, but that other methods are looked at. That's what this group is supposed to be doing, is looking at other ways. And but, but it doesn't say that in there. And as you all know, if it doesn't say it, it doesn't happen. So I would respectfully ask that you all please talk about that and have some consideration for adding that language. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Final Speaker, Newell Hollingsworth.
Newell Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue in Southwest Ranches. One of the speakers had a lot of misconceptions of what exactly our town is doing. We tried to explain that last night at our waste meeting, which we had, which I wish the people that are here tonight had been there last night. And the misconceptions is that if we said, we're not going to be part of the ILA, and they get less than 75%, that kills it, and that's the end of the incinerator. Well, that's incorrect. 100% incorrect. Because Plan B is for Broward County on its own, and if you read the documentation from their meetings, you'll see that they're going to build it as Plan B. So what we have to do, and we are doing as a town, is we have a zero-waste committee that is trying to get together two sections. One is educate everyone as to what zero waste is and recycling and the new techniques of recycling on a county-wide basis. And so far, we've only hit this little tiny area in southwest Broward County in order to defeat the incinerator. But we passed a resolution saying no incinerator in our town, and I know Pembroke Pines has passed one that said no incinerator in their town. But the incinerator of Broward County builds it is going to be an unincorporated Broward County, where neither us nor any other municipality has one lick of say in it being built. Unless, according to this ILA, we can convince the other municipalities, and that's the hard part, we have to convince the other municipalities that there's a better way and a cost-effective way, which would be through recycling. And I've been looking at all of the different recycling industries within the United States, and they're using artificial intelligence and robots and everything else. The last time I was at a recycling plant was many years ago, where there were 10,000 people basically in a line pulling it out by hand. But it's changed since then. And I would like a couple of minutes extra, if I could, please, Mr. Mayor. And what we have to do, and what we have said we would do in our, basically our zero-waste task force, is that we would educate and get as many people within this county to raise their voices that we do not want incinerators. We do not want the four incinerators that we have been told, I have been told by Beam Fur, that this county will need to take care of its trash. Four incinerators, that's the four corners of the county. So what we have to do is educate and also give a viable economic plan for recycling that is cost-effective as best as we can, and have the state help us by changing some of the laws which make recycling easier and cost-effective. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. So it looks like we want to redo in the back. No, no, you cannot. You can, you can, you can take your time if you want, but you cannot.
Put in 30 seconds.
Thank you. No, that's not how we do it. Thank you. You had, I gave you extra time when we were up here.
I appreciate that.
You're welcome. All right, that's the end of public comment. Okay, board reports. Mary Ann, looking forward to your report.
Richard's just going to be here to make sure that I don't forget anything. Mary Ann Allen, I'm on the incinerator task force along with Richard and some very dedicated people.
Can you say the zero-waste task force as opposed to the incinerator task force?
Well, we're fighting the incinerator. You know what? That might be something to put in with that. Thank you. So your incinerator task force has been going to all the meetings between, the two meetings in Pembroke, zero-waste task force, sorry.
Thank you.
We've gone to four meetings, two in Pembroke Pines, and one in Miami-Doral, and one in Miami-Dade. And I made a short synopsis of what they're saying because we need to know what the other cities are doing, planning, and this gives us a good idea of how we can proceed to prevent incinerators being built. So the first meeting was in Pembroke Pines, and there was over 1,000 people that showed up. And they all spoke with the same voice, no incineration. The meeting started off with some disinformation, where they were saying it was a figment of our imagination that incinerators were on the agenda, okay? And then Beam gave us his sales pitch, if you want to call it, for quite some time. But out of his entire sales pitch, there was never one mention of the word, we're going to build incinerators. And when I had a chance to ask him a question, I said, I love your ILA. On the first page, it says zero waste, recycle, refurbish, compost. I said, that's what we want. But I said, why did you hire Arcatus as your consultant, which is a pro-incinerator company? It helps build them. But you did not get a zero-waste consultant? You know, it's not up for the people to figure out how you're going to implement zero waste. This is what zero-waste consultants do, and they help cities implement it effectively and quickly. So I, he denied, I asked him specifically, I understand you put out for an RFQ for an incinerator directly. He denied, in front of everybody, denied, denied. And I remembered that Tom Good, who is a commissioner from Pembroke Pines, he came two weeks prior to our zero-waste task force, and he informed us, because he worked on the solid waste working group, that Beam had done this. So I said to Beam, I'll get the facts and I'll let you know. And I got confirmation from an email from Tom Good to an environmental group that yes, he had put out for an RFQ. But better than that, I found a memorandum, ha, 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 from Beam Fur, and I have it right here. I'd like to enter it into the records, if I may. It's from Beam Fur to Mary Lou Teague, president of the Broward League of Cities. He spells out incineration. He also spells out that Broward County can go ahead if they want and build their own. So I'd like to enter that into the records. So the memorandum is dated March 13th, 2023. That's way before they made the authority, and they're telling you that they haven't made any plans for an incinerator. So you can make what you want of that, okay? All right. But, so I brought that up, and the Pembroke Pines meeting was fabulous. The second one was even better. And I'll tell you why, because of what Pembroke Pines The second one was even better, and I'll tell you why, because of what Pembroke Pines did. I suppose they talked to Tom Good and said, "We're dealing with people that aren't transparent, honest, or work in sunshine, because they've been doing things without telling us and denying it." You can watch the video, okay? That doesn't lie. So we went as a task force. David was there, Mary, Michelle, and her daughter Jackie, who is the future of our task force. She represents the young people whose future is going to be affected, Richard and I. And it was fascinating because not only did they make a resolution that they don't want any incineration, but they've made a resolution in Pembroke Pines to go completely zero-waste with no incineration. At the meeting was their representative from St. Cloud, who assured them that they had unlimited landfill space, and for a good price, they could bring all the garbage from Pembroke Pines, which is a big community. They'll take it all. In the meantime, they have a three-year contract with this company. They can now work for three years and implement zero-waste without rushing. It's a great plan, okay? So after the meeting, we spoke to the mayor of Miramar, Messam, and he was shocked because I told the Pembroke Pines commission, "You are opposing the Broward incinerator, but you have no idea that Dade is planning on putting one five miles from where the Broward one is. So now we're going to have two incinerators." And it gets even worse. The next meeting we went to was the Doral meeting. Same thing, there had to be 1,000 people there, standing room only, people were outside. We were lucky because we went early and got in. But here's the flyer for Doral, okay? Nice green stuff. I want to read a little bit from here. When I read this, I wanted to incinerate on the spot, if you don't mind a pun, okay? Oh, my God. They talk about, hey, zero-waste. "The historical airport site is large enough to accommodate a robust solid waste campus, which means we can deploy more strategies to divert waste from landfills, such as mulching, composting, and anaerobic digestion. These strategies lead to more sustainable waste management countrywide. Quality of life, the closest residential community in Miami Dade is several miles from the proposed site." Right, because they're going to put it in our backyard, right? They don't care. And then the other thing is environmental concerns. "The site has less of an environmental impact than other options that place the facility near Miami Dade residents. Existing land use allows for this type of facility. The facility is proposed on the doorstep of the Everglades, and they're saying it's not going to have an environmental impact." Would you like to have this in the records?
Sure.
Take it. It's actually comical because they double-talk. They talk about implementing zero-waste as good for their people, but in the meantime, they have to build an incinerator. When you go into contract with an incinerator company, you're stuck for 40 years. And the thing with incinerators is they require four tons a day. If your community tries to, first of all, they're going to get you in a contract and say, "You owe us this much garbage every day." If you try to implement zero-waste, you're going to reduce that garbage, they're going to surcharge the residents. There's 29 municipalities in the country now that have filed for bankruptcy that can't afford their incinerators. So going on to the Doral meeting, I got a flavor of what the people were saying. 75% of the residents said, "We don't care where you put it, as long as it isn't in our backyard." 75%. It was always not in my backyard. So we spoke up, the biologist for the Mikasuki spoke up, how important it is for the indigenous Mikasuki who live fish and live there and eat the wildlife. They're going to be the most impacted by this. And the residents that we have in Miramar, Southwest Ranches, we all know what can happen here. Our water can get contaminated, our soil, our animals won't be able to graze, and we won't be able to breathe. Okay? So after the meeting in Pembroke Pines, that meeting in Doral was very significant. After we spoke, we were the only ones that spoke for zero-waste, for the environment. The whole room applauded. So I think if we educate the people in Miami Dade, they have their own groups, grassroots groups that are fighting, it's Miami Rising, and what was the other one?
Earth Justice.
Earth Justice. They have a grassroots, too, so the people are starting to try to fight back. And the last meeting, which was in Dade, and that's a nightmare getting down there, an hour and a half in traffic. You should see the traffic going to Miami. I mean, I've gone for years, but it's like quadrupled, and it took us an hour and a half to get down there. You've got to go through security, visitor check-in. It's worse than the airport when you go in. I guess they must have some volatile people there. They need that much security. And I look at our little council, and we're all friendly here, we're all friends and neighbors, and it gives me a warm feeling. So on September 6, we went to the Dade meeting. And I thought it was very interesting because Commissioner Bermudez thanked Mary Lou Teague. And was it Geller that was there?
That was at the Doral.
Yeah, but he was thanking them in this meeting for being there.
Greg Ross.
No, it was Greg Ross. Greg Ross and Mary Lou Teague were at the Doral meeting, but at the September 6 meeting in Dade, he's saying on the podium, "Thank you to Mary Lou Teague and Ross, who attended our meeting in Doral, for helping them with their plans, and Arcadis for building the incinerator." Okay? This is important information that we got for you, because we spend the hours at these meetings. And he also said, "Both counties, both Dade and Broward, will be working together on a regional plan for incinerators." Does that mean that they're going to bring garbage from the entire region? It can, okay? They're not limiting it just to Miami and Broward. We can be transporting from northeast. So that's why the four incinerators, which Newell said, "We're going to be taking all the garbage from the rest of the country and dumping it in the Everglades where they think that it's just a swamp anyway." Now, there was, what I appeared, pressure on a lot of the commissioners to go with this plan and vote that day. There were two that spoke out against the vote. And the one that I really liked, and what was her name, Regalas?
Regalado.
Regalado, okay. She spoke against voting that day. She said she read the Arcadis deport, report. I just have a couple more minutes. She read the Arcadis report, and she said the report was the consult report. Very aggressive, but her most famous thing was she said, "Arcadis puts profit before people." And this is the company that you're going to go with on the authority that has made the report for Broward. It's Arcadis. And the other thing that Bermudez bragged about, when they get rid of the incinerator in Doral, his residents will have a 30% to 40% increase in their property values, while ours go down. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sure.
I want to speak on behalf of the task force as well.
Yeah, please.
I'm going to be very brief.
Please, go ahead.
Because I think Mary Ann, Richard, Noel have all shared a tremendous amount of information. I'm just going to say that I think that one of the main focuses of the zero-waste task force is focusing on zero-waste and getting out that education and really trying to steer everything that way. So there's a big push, and we have several different committees. We're looking for people, you know, committees on the zero-waste education, looking for, you know, people that have expertise with marketing and social media, so we can bullet, you know, really pinpoint the bullet points of what we're trying to get out there, people that are involved with schools, PTA, high school students, college students, that would like to maybe form some kind of group in their schools and get the young people who have a tremendous voice today involved. Some, there's several others, but if anyone wants to get involved with the group, we have an email. It's zerowastebrowardtf@gmail.com. So if you just email there, we'll get you involved and get all the information out to you, add you to the email list. So we're just trying to reach out to as many people as we can get. Doesn't matter, it's not Broward County, Miami Dade, Palm Beach, it's just, it's everywhere. It's not, "Not in my backyard." It's, we just don't want this at all. It's not good for humans or animals.
Great. Thank you, Debbie. All right. Any other board reports? Seeing none. So before we get into council member comments, which is next, I want to respond a little bit to what we've talked about with zero-waste. And so I want to be clear, we have been very clear with our residents, and we have been working very hard, and I think we've been very successful at communicating to our residents that we are all, we are 100% behind zero-waste. That's where we need to go. That's where the future is, and that is where all our efforts are going. And that anything that we do with the ILA is to remove the incinerator as a potential option. And so I appreciate Iris, your comments. We're right on board. That's been our target. That's still our target. And I'm proud of the way that the council and our residents have really stepped up to get this. I know for myself, we've been on this, we've been working on this a long time, longer, a long time, several months. And when I've gone around and spoke to others, other elected officials in other towns and cities, and I've spoken to a lot of them, for the most part, I am the one informing of new things that they did not, were unaware of, and we have been, what I'm saying is, we've been on the tip of the spear. So we have been doing things long before other communities have, and I'm proud of that. And that is where we need to be. We need to be focused on zero-waste. You know, the next generation has zero interest in burning their garbage. They're past it. If we do anything that's incinerator-related, you know what? We're buying a 10-year-old model car, right? And that's not what we want. What we want is the newest methodologies that are going to be making sense 25, 30, 50 years from now. And that's where we're moving to. So I personally, we are going to stay, because we've voted as a council, and I have not heard any in our conversations, we are going to stay in the ILA, and we are going to work hard to change their goals. We are going to change their goals to go towards zero-waste, because that's where we are. That's what makes sense for the county. If we dip below 75%, will we revisit it? Sure, we'll revisit it. But there's no way that we're walking away from a vote to where we can vote and make a difference there. There's no way we're walking away from that. But our vote is going to be for zero-waste, 100%, and that's what we're about. And I would appreciate, although I always appreciate input, I feel like we've gotten distracted with this, "Are you in the ILA or out of the ILA?" I feel that's a distraction. We should be focusing on working together for zero-waste solutions, not being distracted. I think the whole Arcadis and those that are interested in the incinerator are happy to see us going back and forth on whether we're in or out of the ILA. That's not the point. The point is, let's work together for a solution that's zero-waste. We have, as Debbie, as Richard, and Mary Ann have talked about, we have an incredibly powerful force that's taking hold, and we have a number of committees that need support. We need help. And I've been thrilled that we, at these meetings, we've had individuals coming from a lot of places far and wide outside of the ranches, as well as in the ranches. And that's what we should be doing. And we would appreciate everyone focusing on those, those folks are taking action and moving the needle to, with our schools, with our other municipalities, with doing the research on the reality of how we can do zero-waste in an economical way. These folks are spending incredible amount of time to come up with the solutions that are going to make a difference, not for political reasons, but for the fact that we can come up with a solution for zero-waste that will be right for the next generation and the right for Florida going forward. So I would encourage everyone to take a look at these committees that are being set up. Let's sign up for them. Let's get involved. Let's do the hard work that it's going to take to move zero-waste forward and make it a reality for Broward County. And let's get away from the distraction. I'm not saying, you know, for the towns that want to be in the ILA or the towns that want to be out of the ILA, that's fine. I'm not trying to convince anyone one way or the other at this point. But what I am saying is, let's not get distracted about an ILA when we're all in this together to come up with a solution for zero-waste. So let's not get distracted by it. Let's come together, let's focus on it, and let's make it happen. I can't tell you the number of times that people come up to me and tell me, "Listen, you're dreaming. This is not going to hap-" This is going to happen. Let me tell you something. This is going to happen. We can either do it now, or we can make another stupid mistake with an incinerator and let our kids do the right thing down the line. But it's going to happen. Incinerators are anything but sustainable, okay? And so the question is, are we forward-thinking enough to make it the reality now? And I think we are, and I think that's what we should be focusing on. I'll leave it there.
I think we heard the mayor's opening speech for the first authority meeting.
There we go. There we go.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question of you?
Yeah, let me just, Iris.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just want to say to you, I was so very impressed with this young lady and with Mary Ann talking about putting these groups together. I would ask, please, that you reach out to me, because I have residents that want to get involved, and I think that if we work together, you know, we can make-
That's awesome. That is awesome.
So please get my contact, everybody has my contact information, and I would be more than happy to set up meetings with everybody so we can organize more in the group. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Iris. Thank you.
Thanks for taking the leadership.
Yeah, really appreciate it. Yeah, David, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have one little question, and it's kind of right where you were. What would be the consequence, expected consequences if the ILA was disbanded?
Yeah, I mean, you know, nobody knows for sure, but I can tell you what I think. I think that's what's going to happen, is the county, as Newell said, there's a Plan B. The county, I don't think any of us in this room are under any illusion that the county, per se, wants to go to zero-waste. They're ready to drop an incinerator out here tomorrow, if we get out of the way, you know? So if, you know, that's, I don't want to put it into the county's hands, because I think I know exactly what's going to happen then.
Exactly. Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Thank you for allowing me to do that, a little bit of liberty on that. All right, council member comments. Who'd like to go? David.
I'll go. Gary? Gary was the lead.
David, you're first. First up, David. Go for it.
First up, all right.
Make note, Russell, in the minutes.
All right. Thanks, everybody, for coming out. I want to wish everyone who practices a happy Rosh Hashanah. May all of you have a sweet New Year. Rosh Hashanah, October, yeah. Okay, regarding some issues coming up, October 28, from 6 to 9 at Rolling Oaks Barn, we're going to have the town Halloween party, and it's going to include issue that I brought up many years ago, the hay bale decorating contest. So I'm pretty excited to see that moving forward. It has got feet, and it's moving. I like it. And then as liaison to the Rural Public Arts and Design Advisory Board, the December Holiday Lights contest is going to start rolling. The deadline to submit your entry is December 1, and you do not have to have your home decorated by then, but judging will begin December 5, and the awards will start, will be awarded on December 7. And then one last thing that I'm going to talk about is my monthly traffic report, the Law &amp; Order report. For District 1, there were five tickets issued, two of those were speeding, both of those were on US 27. District 2, there were 49 tickets issued during the month of August, 42 of those were speeding, that's almost all of them, and 11 of those were on interior roads. District 3, there were 41 tickets, 19 of those were speeding, one of those were on interior road. And then District 4, 131 tickets, 115 of those were speeding, but only 11 of those were on interior roads, that's Sterling and Hancock. So that kind of wraps up my report, and pass it on.
Great. Thank you, David. Who'd like to go next? Gary?
I'll go. Cross a couple off that David mentioned.
There we go.
That's what I do.
The holiday lights, right?
Yeah.
It feels like you don't normally get to do that.
Well, I was asleep, sorry. Well, I was asleep, sorry. Just a few things, just, most of the stuff I want to cover is on the agenda, so it's, it'll be short here. We got hazmat at the barn coming up this month on the 23rd. Batteries, electronics, oil, used motor oil, fluorescent light bulbs, you know, it can't be easier. You drive up to the barn, show your driver's license, and you don't even have to get out of your car or your truck. And it's one of the great services that we provide, you know, talking zero-waste here.
100%.
Yes, we do this four times a year, and it, used tires, you know, the whole enchilada. And it works for the town. And it's, we have shredding, I think it's up to four banker boxes, if you know what those are. And we also have drug prescription drop-off by the Davie Police Department, which they do a great job keeping that going on. So, all that starts at 10:00 AM, or is it 10:00 AM or 9?
It's earlier, yeah.
Yeah, well, 8.
8.
Yeah, 10 is the shredding.
Correct.
And it goes till 2:00. And everybody, oh, thank you. 10 to 1. Okay. Got it.
Document.
Dropout shredding, got it. Thank you. And anyway, it's a great service provided by Waste Management, and we need to use it a lot, you know? The next Zero-Waste Task Force is going to be on October 11th at 7:00 PM. Is that correct? It's the only, it's the one thing you guys did the same time that I wrote down, so I figured I would include that. And I'll finish up with the DMV Flowmobile is back. It'll be here in the parking lot on the 27th of this month, from 10 to 2. Called Debra's office to make a reservation. They're still doing that, right? With appointments? Yeah. And it's a great service, you know, if you need anything done from the Florida Department of Motor Vehicles. And that's all I got for right now, Mayor.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you, Gary. Who'd like to go next? Jim?
I'll go. All right. I'd like to follow up a little bit on what David brought up this evening with his resolution here. The Broward League of Cities was speaking about this Jimson Board that is going to be, yeah, bus this Jimson that's going into the roads. And I mentioned to them that we had a resolution that was going to be presented to the town, and several of the council members there asked, and I was able to send it to them. So, maybe we're leading the way on this. Maybe they'll follow in our footsteps and come up with some type of resolution. They didn't understand until, you know, it was explained just what that is and the harms of it. So, maybe some of the other towns will do it also. And then, following on the traffic, I got a report for 186th, the new signs it's put up. I told you that it does a lot. It doesn't write tickets, but it does just about everything else. And the sign was put up probably a week or so before school started, and then they have it one week before school, and then they have it two weeks into the school year. And the numbers here are pretty interesting in that, on the average, on a Monday, and I don't know why Monday's low, but on the average, 1,350 cars go through there in a day. It seems like the busiest day of the week is Wednesday. I have no idea why. And for somehow, some way, that number goes up to 1,600. It makes no sense. But the average speed through there is about 32 mile an hour, and that's for about 85% of the cars that go through. 32 mile an hour. Most of the speeding is at 10 to 1:00 in the morning. I mean, they have the times here, and I don't believe that we'll have the Davie Police Department out there writing tickets at that time. But I just thought this was very interesting as to what you can get from this fixed sign that we put up, and we're going to put up a lot more around town, I believe, right? So, maybe the Davie Police Department could use these in the future to help slow the traffic down, you know? I think that'd be great. And for us to put them up, that's a great idea. And the Broward County Water Board, I sit on that. They have a couple of things that they've brought up. The first being that they sent to the county, a resolution county passed it, that if you're a real estate agent and you're selling real estate, that you must disclose if a property is on septic or a well. That doesn't affect us too much, because most of us are out here, but that will affect some of the properties over in Hollywood and places like that. Everybody assumes that they're hooked up to sewer and water, but that's not true. And that's what their main goal is, to see that they can get sewer and water to all those municipalities hooked up and get off septic tanks. It'll be a long time before we ever do that, but that's what they're pushing for. And then, there was a study done by the, with the Broward Water Board. They had a study done for the ground-level water. The ground-level water is rising, and you can see that every time there's a king tide in Miami and Hollywood, the streets are flooded. So, what they're going to do is present this proposal that was written up to the county, and if the county adopts it, I ask, how would that affect future building? Does that mean that the homes out here would have to be at a higher elevation? And if that's the truth, then the neighbors next door get flooded, or the people on the property have to build bigger berms. So, you know, one thing is the water's there, and you've got to do something about it. But to do something about it means there's consequences. So, you know, these are the things that some of the boards that I sit on are dealing with. And lastly, I'd like to say that I had the privilege of attending Miramar's 911 dedication, the 22nd dedication. Miramar, 10 years ago, was able to obtain two steel beams, 8,000 pounds apiece, 12-foot long, from the World Trade Center, actual beams from the World Trade Center. What they did, they took it to the park, they built a monument, and it was dedicated. It was a very moving, very enlightening day. Lot of the big dignitaries from Tallahassee came down. Our Robin Votterman was there, and Debbie Wasserman Schultz, some of the others were there. All the towns had some representative there. If you get a chance to go to Miramar's Park, Regional Park, take a look at it. Not only is there a dedication for the 911, but there's a dedication for veterans next to it. It's a very, very nice, laid-out, well-thought-out thing. That's all I have, Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Jim. Bob?
It's nice going close to the end, because, let's see, what can I cross off? The speed sign data? I do want to spend a minute on holiday lights. The mayor talked about the committees with our Zero-Waste Board, or Committee. But on that topic, Russell and I had a meeting last week with Waste Management, WM, excuse me, to talk to them about their recycling capabilities and-
Stay close to Mike.
I'm sorry. Let me get a little closer. Thank you. What we learned is that Waste Management actually does a tremendous amount of recycling. They have capabilities all over the United States. Now, what does that mean? We got some details, but we really want to work with them on a plan to improve our recycling. At the end of our one-year cycle, which is coming up next month, we'll have been with Waste Management for a year. We'll have our statistics on how much bulk, how much recycling, how much garbage goes out. And the challenge for us would be to figure out what that percentage is of recycling and begin to increase it. One of the things we've heard at some of these meetings are, the easiest way to eliminate an incinerator from the discussion is to get everybody in Broward County up to 75%. Now, whether that's realistic or not, look to Europe, look to certain parts of the United States where it's currently being done. It is definitely realistic. But the key thing on moving forward with those folks is for them to help us. We pay them a lot of money every year. They're doing this all around the United States, so we've asked them to begin to help us craft a program to increase our own recycling up to 75%. I mean, why shouldn't we lead by example? We're doing a number of things right now that is getting the thoughts rolling. If all of our neighbors get up to 75%, there's no need for an incinerator. That's the point. So, we'll continue to work with that. We'll set the goal. I mean, I'll talk to the council probably next month after we start getting more information from Waste Management on how they can help us improve our recycling through collaterals. Most of you that are signed up for the towns online, Andy, help me out a second. What's a tool you guys use for distributing emails and the things?
Constant Contact.
Thank you. You know, we inform through Constant Contact, and the, I get at least one or two emails a week. We want to start improving our recycling, so that'll be maybe the first channel that we start on, trying to get the word out. But we're going to look to them. They do this all over the nation. They're good at it, so why shouldn't we learn from them and, you know, ask them to get on the hook to support us and help us out? And they've agreed. We spoke to their national, I believe their nationally recycling Vice President, Manager, Russell? Yeah. And we also spoke to the person who is responsible for regional operations for recycling. So, they were willing to help out. You know, being in the business, they really want to fill their landfill. I mean, that's how they make their money. But they're certain, they have requirements from counties and municipalities around the United States to do exactly what we're asking. So, it's been done. It's not new for them. So, I did want to mention that. I'll be talking at council meetings in the future about how we can get to that goal of Just one other point on the meeting. First off, last night's meeting was excellent. We had about 35 people here. Everybody was engaged. We had both sides, too. We had people from Pembroke Pines here that were trying to persuade to go the route that Pembroke Pines is, and then we had a lot of people that were looking forward to helping us out. So, I was really proud of it. Now, the one thing I wanted to mention, forget the dates, it's going to be the second Tuesday every month. Excuse me. Thank you. Second Wednesday, like last night, every month. So, if you can keep that in your back of your mind, we're all writing articles about these meetings and what we want to do. So, keep an eye on the town newsletter for more information going out on this, and as well, the constant comment emails you'll get as well. So, we're all here to try to help make this a viable solution. And when people tell us it's being done all over the world, why can't we? So, I have, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Great. Thank you, Bob. All right. I did want to mention a few other things. We did have a meeting, we did have a meeting of some of the local communities, you know, local municipalities, and so it was a good, it was a good opportunity to bring, we had a long discussion about zero-waste. We all talked about some other, which was good, because the Mayor of Davie was there, the Mayor of Plantation was there, and we were able to, you know, really get the communication there. It's been, it's been really good, meeting with these folks and getting the word out. It's going to take time, but we're making real progress, so I'm encouraged by it. One of the other things that came up, that I brought up during the meeting, aside from zero-waste, was, because we had some key players there, was our trail going across I-75 on Sterling Road. And we got a pretty enthusiastic endorsement from Davie, that they would like to see that happen, and that they were, you know, really 100% behind it. And so, I think we're good there. So, based on that, we've, I've asked administration to really pursue that. There's some, there's some big players that we need to get involved, like, you know, FDOT and things like that, because we've got an interstate we're talking about and some other things. So, we're not, we're not home-free, but I think we've got some real momentum locally for it. And usually, that's the biggest hurdle, you know? If the bigger guys realize that everybody local wants to do it, then they tend to get in line. So, just wanted to make you all aware that there's some, there's some movement there, and looking forward to that moving forward. We have also been doing some things also, from an administrative standpoint, for zero-waste, and I wanted to distribute this out. We have put together a letter that is very similar to what was, what has been sent out by others, and this is being sent to the Mayor of Miami-Dade County to let them know formally that we are in favor of a zero-waste solution, not an incinerator solution. So, this is going to be sent out tomorrow, so I wanted you all to be aware of that. I also would like to propose that we do a formal resolution opposing the incinerator in Miami-Dade County, and that's something we can also then forward onto them. So, we're, if we can get that perhaps on the next agenda as a resolution opposing that, I think that would be a step in the right direction. And I think that is what I got. So, just real proud of everybody that, all the work that's being done here. I know it's a ton of work. I know it is a ton of work, and you all are doing just a mammoth job to make it happen. So, thank you all very much. Really appreciate it. All right. Next item, legal comments.
Just, Mayor, you mentioned DOT. In case the council doesn't know, Jerry O'Reilly at DOT retired.
Yeah.
Steve Braun is now the new District 4 Representative. He is a good friend of ours and will be very helpful to the town.
Awesome. That's great news. Thank you, Keith. All right. Administrative comments.
I think you all did a good job of covering what needed to be covered. I know we have a lengthy agenda ahead, so I'll yield my time.
Okay. Very good. Thanks, Andy. All right. Item number eight, please.
Item eight, excuse me, is an ordinance on second reading. This is an ordinance of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the Town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code, Article 90, Subdivision Design and Access Standards, Section 090-080, access to development to modify standards for certain ingress, egress, easements, providing for codification, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Great. Do I have a motion this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, if you could please call the, oh, go ahead.
Just wait, I think you're-
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Person to the right.
We are, we're one vote short. Thank you.
Is busy at the moment.
Take a look.
However, the volume is really good in there. I mean-
You actually, Mayor, you don't need him for this vote. It's only first reading.
Second reading.
No, this is second reading.
Second.
Oh, God, I apologize. You do need him.
Right.
It looks like Andy's going to go get him.
Nope.
Nope.
Nope. Don't touch him, man.
We'll send in December. That could be interesting.
There he comes. He can start. All right.
All right. Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Brightcruz?
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you. Item number nine, please.
This is an ordinance of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the Town of Southwest Ranches Code of Ordinances to provide a new section pertaining to the use of fireworks within the town, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Gary, any comments on this?
Not at this point, no.
Okay. Any other council comments?
Anybody else have anything they want to?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Mayor and council, I do have a few remarks about the second reading of this ordinance. At the first reading, I asked if there was a way to make it legal to have fireworks display if the residents obtained a permit through the town. All right? I feel the requirements that were added to this second reading that a resident must meet in order to obtain a permit does not allow that. All right? All right? Under Section Two, the use of fireworks in the town, I specifically am looking at Section Four, One, and the residents within seven hundred and fifty foot of the site be notified? I would really like to see that reduced, if we would, to about four hundred and fifty foot, because of the new requirement that the low decimal fireworks will greatly reduce the noise passed on to other properties. A seven hundred and fifty foot requirement would be much harder for a resident on a one acre property to obtain a permit than it would be for a resident on a much larger property. I want to pass out these here real quick. I'm passing out a, uh, flyer that I printed up, and it deals with decimals, and if you read that, it will tell you that a hundred decimals, as you move away, one meter, two meters, three meters, so forth, that the sound goes away by six decimal points each time you move a meter away, or double the distance away. So, at the end of sixteen meters, or fifty-two foot, that sound from a hundred and decimals is minimal. It's just, you know, it's not something that's gonna bother, uh, people. So, I really would like to see if we would to reduce this seven hundred and fifty foot to something that the residents in the, uh, one acre properties could, uh, could live with. The second part of the sentence reads, "If they do not object," this is in regards to a request that goes out or that's sent out to all the residents, "this was not in the helicopter ordinance." I know that most of this language came from there, but this was not in the ordinance. We put this in, that means they cannot get a permit, all right? That's the way I feel. Uh, in recent helicopter ordinance, like I said, the object was not in there. Section four point two, I agree with. Section four point three, I don't understand what this means, uh, with the low decimal fireworks, how it's gonna harm any other people. I know it was in the helicopter ordinance, but I really don't see how it affects this one here. Section four point four, uh, no livestock within seven hundred and fifty foot. This ordinance deals with a very different issue, which was a helicopter issue. The helicopter's moving over a large area as it lands and takes off, so it could affect a much larger number of livestock. The fireworks that we're talking about will be located and contained on a single property, and the noise level from the hundred decimal fireworks would be greatly reduced, as that chart that I just sent you reads. Before, because the fireworks are low noise, I don't feel that the seven hundred and fifty foot requirement is needed. All right? As the decimal chart shows, all right, the one acre properties, a hundred and fifty foot wide, I believe that that would be sufficient to suppress the noise from the fireworks. Section four point five is, if the objection above is taken out, so that the people could obtain a permit, where it says, "Do not have to object," all right, then I'd like to see the sixty day requirement reduced to thirty days, since there is no back and forth letters exchanged, you're not exchanging letters with each other, just a simple request would go out from the resident telling the people what's coming. And, uh, the last, on the cleanup, I, I have to pick up debris at twelve o'clock midnight, I think would be dangerous i- i- if the fireworks had not detonated. Uh, safety people say to wait twenty-four hours before handling and disposing of fireworks and debris. I'd like to see that changed to a twenty-four hour period, to ask people to pick it up at midnight, uh, where they're still hot, or putting them in a garbage can where there may be a fire. If they wait in a twenty-four hour period or so, you know, I think that would be best. So, those were some of the changes that I'd like to discuss, if, if we could, and, uh, you know, see if we can't get this passed.
Okay.
Thank you, mayor.
So, I'm gonna, yeah, Gary, I was gonna turn it over to you, really, this is kind of...
Thanks.
Yeah. I'm gonna scoot my chair back.
Um, Jim?
Yes?
Let's, uh, let's do this all over again. This is called rinse and repeat, because there was a lot of, a lot of changes that you wanted to make here. Um, what, and I've had a hard time following them here in the, in the backup that I'm looking at here. So, could you start at the top again and take them one by one?
Right. Under the section that reads, "Low decimal fireworks, a hundred or less," and it says, "In determining whether a permit should be issued, the applicant shall demonstrate reasonable satisfaction to the town," and it gives a list. Under that list, the first one is, "Residents within seven hundred and fifty foot of the site have been notified." I would like to see that reduced to about four hundred and fifty foot. That would give the residents in a one acre, uh, uh, property, uh, that would be like three neighbors either way. It wouldn't affect the two and a half acre properties very much, because they're already seven, eight hundred foot from a resident, but it would greatly affect the people in the one acre properties.
Okay, I have no problem with that at all. What, what's your second thing?
All right, the second thing would be to take out in the, um...
The next line?
Yes.
Do you object to the request?
Yeah, where it says, uh, that, uh, they object, where if they object to the letter, all right, that was not in the helicopter ordinance at all. You know, it just said that they had to be notified, all right? I, I don't mind notifying, but if your next door neighbor's ticked off at you, you'll never be able to shoot off fireworks, I mean...
So, you want to eliminate that, that word?
Yes, sir. Eliminate the word "object."
Okay, um, so, we would eliminate it after the word "request," the rest of the, uh, sentence, and do not object to the request?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm fine with that. What's your next one?
With Section, uh, four point two, I, I agree. Four point three, can you explain what four point three is? Four point three says that the request will be delirious, or whatever it is, to the surrounding areas. That means harmful. I don't see, you know, I, I don't see where the new fireworks with the low decimal would harm anyone. I mean, that's why we're going to them.
Okay.
I've seen videos, yeah, I've seen videos of these. I've watched probably fifty videos here over the past couple of weeks.
Okay.
And the noise is minimal. I, I mean, it's almost like a firecracker.
You want to eliminate, uh, line three completely?
Yes, sir. If that's possible.
It's a protection for the town.
Oh, uh, legal just informed me that's protection for the town.
How, uh, Keith?
Sure. So, all that says is that the request will not be deleterious to the surrounding, uh, community, which is a standard for the town to determine whether or not the blasting of the firework in a certain location would be dangerous for the town. Uh, an example, if you want one, there's certain portions of the town that are covered with high power lines, okay? If they set up a blasting zone, and not noise, but actual location, underneath one of those high power lines, the impact of the firework at that location could create a safety hazard for the town.
Okay.
So, that is in there so that the town can confirm that where the location of that fireworks is being blasted will not have a negative consequence to the town as a whole.
Yes, sir. That can stay. Thank you. I don't, that, you explained it greatly.
Hey, all right, we're agreeing on that. What, what else you got?
Uh, then Section Four, that there's no livestock maintained within seven hundred and fifty foot. I don't see why that is necessary, uh, uh, with the low noise. If you're shooting them off in a two and a half acre, five acre field, it's not gonna do anything, even setting them off in, uh, Green Meadows, where the lots are a hundred and fifty foot wide, uh, by the time, if you read that decimal report, by the time it gets to your neighbors, it's no more than a firecracker going off. And like I said...
So, what, so what should the seven fifty be? Four fifty?
I, I don't think that there needs to be the livestock there, because the areas like Green Meadows, Deans Ranches, and, and, uh, you know, I mean, I, I, I don't know. We, we can, we can come up with something, but...
I think, I think we need to have something that...
All right, the seven hundred and fifty foot is a long way, you know?
I'd, I'd keep it at the four fifty.
Too close. I'd, yeah.
Too short?
In my neighborhood, that's only a lot, two lots away.
Seven hundred...
No, go ahead, Sam.
I mean, seven hundred and fifty feet is not very far.
No.
I mean, when you're talking about, Jim, I, I don't, I don't know, I'll be honest with you, I don't, I don't know where this came from.
Right.
But I don't think it's accurate at all. Um, and the reason why I say that is because when I hear fireworks, it can be, it can be a quarter mile away, and it's still loud.
Yeah.
It's impactful.
Yes, sir.
So, there's no way, if it's, if it's a hundred decibels, there's no way that in, you know, sixteen meters or something, that it's, it's quiet. That's just, it's, it's not even...
But, but we are talking about the new, uh, uh, fireworks, Steve. Uh, the hundred decimal or less, they're very quiet fireworks, they're almost...
But I'm saying anything, it does, it just simply doesn't dissipate that, that quickly. It doesn't dis... Anyway, I, I think the seven fifty, I don't know if I'm comfortable with seven fifty, like, it needs to be, be more than that. So, so I, I personally would have a problem, I'll just say that. I personally would have a big problem with that being less than seven fifty.
I do, too.
I'll just stop there.
Well, most of the fireworks, like I said, uh, do not explode. These fireworks go up, they're more like your fountains, your small fountains. They shoot up in the air, they're bright colored, they're this, that, you know, they light up the sky with tails. There's no in-sky explosions, the only pop comes from the ground when it takes off, and that's like a firecracker. The air is all fans, it's, um, you know, it, it's comets, it, it's bright colors. I mean, I've watched fifty videos of them, and they're not the same fireworks that you and I are, are used to, they're just not. Yeah, I, I had video of people sitting probably fifty foot from a wedding as they went off, and it was just spectacular, where you could hear them talking very easily, you know, boy, that was nice, wow, this was great. So, I, I don't think that these fireworks are as bad. I know we're so used to the old ones, but I don't think that the new ones are, are that bad.
Let me ask you this, play devil's advocate here. Can you obtain, purchase, these new fireworks here in South Florida?
I do not know if you can or not, to be honest. I do not know if you can or not.
Because I'm, I'm thinking that we might be debating something that's, that's not there.
Not realistic.
But if, if you can't buy them, then you can't have the permit. I mean, you know what I'm saying?
Well, anybody can say they, they've got them, and then, and they light them up, and they're, they're, uh, they're, they're not...
Well, they specifically say on the fireworks that they're low noise?
Well, I know that.
Right, it's specifically written on them. So, if you went out there and they're not low noise, you know, you'd be in violation of this. So, you know, I don't think that people would come in and deliberately try to pull a permit and switch them out. That, that wouldn't be very smart.
No, I understand that, but I, I think the seven fifty is a, is a non-starter. I, I mean, uh, changing the seven fifty is a non-starter.
Yeah, Keith, a legal question here. I just want to make sure I understand this. So, on this page here, where it goes through, and it has the two, I'm looking for a page number, I don't see it, but it's the, basically, Section Two, and then it goes through item two, three, and then four is the low decimal fireworks, a hundred decibels or less. You see that, where I'm at? And then there's the five items beneath that. Is that a subset of item number four, or is that totally separate?
No, it's a subset of four. What four says that, uh, low decimal fireworks may be permitted, meaning that it may be allowed by the town, uh, provided that a permit is issued by the town, okay? Then it goes on to say, "In determining whether a permit should be issued, the applicant shall demonstrate to the reasonable satisfaction of the town." So, that alone created a standard that is not that they conclusively have to demonstrate those five items.
Right.
But they have to, to the reasonable satisfaction of the town, that they have complied with those five items, and that's when it lists one through five.
Thank you.
Well, I think the seven fifty on the livestock, um, probably needs to stay where it's at. I, I don't, I don't see this, I don't see this getting passed by changing that.
Right.
To be honest with you. The other items, I, I agree with you on them, I have no problem with them. And you had one more item after that.
Yeah, would you consider four hundred and fifty foot the same as we did with notifying the residents that they're four hundred and fifty foot away? That, you know, we, we shorten the distance to notify the residents, would we shorten the distance to notify them for, for, for the animals? I mean, the seven hundred and fifty foot in a one acre properties are just very difficult for anybody to ever have a permit.
I'll have my colleagues wa, uh, weigh in on that, on what they think on the four fifty.
I'm not sure what the, uh...
I don't like the four fifty.
Yeah, I don't like the four fifty either.
Nope, I don't like the four fifty on that one.
Yeah, Jim, you know, I mean, we, we gotta protect those animals.
I, I absolutely agree. I do.
We gotta protect those animals.
Right.
That's, that's what it's about, so...
But we don't...
We're not, I'm not trying to cramp anybody's style or anything, but, uh, you know, that's, that's who we are on the ranches, so...
I, I absolutely understand that, Steve, but the problem is, the people on the one acres don't have the same livestock and all that the people on the other bigger acres that would be able to pull this off. So, the people in Green Meadows and Deans Ranches would have a much harder time if they wanted to celebrate their kid's birthday or something. You know, I'm just looking out for the people that live on the, the smaller acres, and the people that live in the bigger acres, they have the advantage because of the, of the size of the property.
But Jim?
Yes?
Now, in the Green Meadows areas that you had mentioned, you said it's gonna be more difficult to comply with.
Louder.
Are, are there, are there livestock in those properties?
Yes.
Yes, there, there is livestock in those properties, okay? But there's not livestock spread out everywhere through that property. There's several properties in Green Meadows that have livestock, all right? But if you live seven or eight houses away from them, uh, you know, that's not seven hundred and fifty foot, you're not allowed, you know...
What's with your property, Jim?
Hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty?
Yeah.
So, we're talking about five houses away?
Yeah.
That's not unrealistic to me.
Yeah, but that's front, back, side, that's, that's, that's an area like...
That's a circle.
Right, right, a circle, right.
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 Because, I mean, two doors down from Debbie, three doors down from Debbie, on my side of her street, we got Roger, uh, Roberts, who's, uh, uh, he's got probably six horses in his backyard.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, the horses...
But how wide's your property?
No, he's on a one acre lot, like you are.
Oh, okay.
Debbie, you're on an acre?
We're an acre. Some of them are, you know, south of the, and we don't care if, if they're within the building acres.
Right.
There are houses in probably every five, six houses.
Yeah, you know, it's, it's not just your neighborhood. I mean, all across town, when you look at the one acre sites, there's tons of animals. And five or six houses away to, you know, to notify, I don't have a problem with that myself. I think that, that's what we owe the residents.
I don't know.
All right, all right, let's not, let's not, let's not yell out, because this is...
Yeah, we'll do a little, little back and forth here that we shouldn't be doing. Um, the, the seven fifty, you know, the, this whole thing is being brought out because, because we have livestock.
Yes, sir.
You know, that, that's the whole genesis of...
Horses.
Why, why we limit the fireworks. And for us to short, to short this, you know, I, I understand what you're pointing out about the one acre lots, um, but, on the other hand, uh, a horse doesn't know, you know, that it's within that zone or not within that zone. It just knows, it just hears a boom, you know, or, or a flashing light that, uh, will can trigger it. You know, it's not always the boom on, on, on a horse, it's flashing lights and things like that which, uh, get them going. I mean, a balloon on a mailbox is enough to spook a horse.
Right, right.
You know, so, we have to be, we have to think a little differently when it comes to, uh, livestock, especially large animal livestock.
Black horses.
You know, I think, I think the seven fifty should stay there.
And you're gonna leave in the applications exempt for, uh, if they have their own lives, livestock?
I would, I would assume that they would have assumed their own liability.
Yeah.
If they, if they wanted.
Let me just go over a couple of comments.
And then, the last one being, yeah, the last one being, uh, the sixty day notice, all right, since there's no letters actually physically going back and forth, thirty days to send them a notice telling them this is gonna happen, thirty days out, uh, you know, sixty days, there's no...
I don't have a problem with that, Jim.
Okay.
Jim, I don't have a problem with it. I think the only question mark we got right now is, is the seven hundred and fifty feet, and the whole thing's being designed to protect livestock.
Right.
That's, that's what the whole thing's designed for. And I think we're shorting ourselves if we, we're kidding ourselves if we modify that.
Hundred percent.
You know, I got no problem with the other things that you asked, that you put on, but the seven fifty, I think, is a, is a sticking point. The, uh, the only other thing I could think of is, uh, I, the hundred decimal fireworks, I've failed to see those. I'm sure, I'm sure it exists, but I've never, I've never seen them or heard them.
I've never seen it.
Or heard them. And is, is this something relatively new to the field?
They've been out about two or three years, right.
Yeah, it's still new. It's still new.
Still new, right.
Yeah. Um, but if somebody's coming in for a permit for it, that has to be specified, that they have to get that.
Yes.
You know, and, and do we want to make them show proof, you know, like a receipt?
Well, the fireworks specifically say on them that they're low noise, Gary, that they, it spells out...
I believe you, I believe you.
Right, that they're that. So, if they were setting off other than that, and somebody called, and the police department did show up, I mean, it's written right on there that they're low noise.
All right, here's, here's what I, what I'd like to do, if I get a second on this, that's great. All of, those were all your concerns, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I, I concur, and I would modify my motion to, for all, all of his concerns and changes with the exception of the seven hundred and fifty feet for the livestock.
Did you make, who made the motion on that? Gary did make it. Okay, good.
Yeah.
Good.
I don't know who did the second.
I seconded, I seconded. I do...
Do we have a record of all the changes? Okay.
I, I do have, uh, one question about the last item that Jim had discussed. The twenty-four hours to clean up the mess?
Yes.
These fireworks are to be on the person's own property and cannot exceed the property.
They will be on their own property, yes. Right.
All right.
Right.
That's all I need to make sure.
Right, they're not going to go over and set them off on public property or anything such as that. This will be on their own.
Yeah, the twenty-four hour is fine.
Right.
The twenty, the twenty-four hour mark is fine, that's because it's the next day.
Yeah.
You're not going to find them in the middle of the night. He's going to, you're going to look for that stuff in daylight. I find it all over the place in my yard. On January second.
Gary, then what I will do, uh, the seven hundred and fifty foot will stay for the livestock. I, I can agree to that.
All right.
Everything else was, was fine, but I'll agree to that. I understand protecting the livestock. I just didn't think that in the Green Meadows, Deans Ranches area, so forth, that, that it would affect the livestock because there's not that many. Maybe out in country estates, I didn't realize that there are a lot of horses in those acres out there. So, I'll allow the seven fifty to stay for the, uh, for the animal.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with all the other changes.
Right.
I'll second the modified motion.
Thank you.
I'll second the modified motion.
We're not done yet. You guys keep seconding things and firsting things.
Go ahead, go for it, Bob.
So, I'm okay with the thirty days. I thought sixty days was a little bit long for a fireworks permit. I don't know if anybody agreed, but we also, Jim also brought up the, instead of eleven fifty-nine PM, which it's never going to happen, I mean, when we clean up our fireworks, it's the next day. So, I would, I would also recommend twenty-four hours there. Now, this concept of low decimal fireworks, I mean, I used to consider myself an aficionado of this stuff. Anybody who likes to blow off fireworks, I'm sorry, they're not going to be buying. I've never heard of this stuff before we started talking about it here, these low decimal fireworks. I think we're trying to enforce something that, I don't know if the cops will enforce it, to be honest with you. Oh, you got real fireworks instead of this other kind. I don't even know if people know about this.
Well, this is only, this is only if they get a permit. If they don't have a permit...
They want the big stuff.
Yeah, if they don't have a permit, they're in violation of the law.
Yes, yeah.
Which allows Davy to, the Davy PD, to confiscate the fireworks, issue a citation, or what have you.
Sure. I like all those concepts. I just think it's unenforceable, to be honest with you. I don't think it's going to happen.
Okay, well, you're, you may be correct, but I'd rather have something on the books that we can apply than not on the books and put our head in the sand.
Yeah, okay. I'll go along with that, Gary. I believe those were my comments. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Any other council comments before I open up to the public? Public comment on this item, please.
Noel Hollingsworth, one hundred and ninety-ninth Avenue. Speaking for every horse owner, chicken owner, donkey owner...
Dog owner.
Dog owner. Well, mainly farm animals is what we're talking about. I have seen horses break their neck. And you're saying, well, it's fireworks goes up. The way people in our town shoot the fireworks, they go that way. I have never seen one go straight up. It's always off that way, so you don't have to do that. And I end up with so many sticks from fireworks in my yard after certain individuals and other streets to the east of me have their ten thousand dollars where the fireworks shot off. But not giving a chance for people to say, "Hell, no," is incorrect. There has to be a way to say no. And the harder it is for these people to, and saying that, oh, they'll use the low volume fireworks. We don't even know if they're available in our area. Research hasn't been done. Why are we talking about something we don't even know if it exists down here? People are going to go in, and when they find out there isn't any low, or it's not the type they want, they're going to get the, the big booms. So, I would like for you to put a very large penalty fine for any event that doesn't use low volume in our town. Very large and very painful, maybe five thousand dollars per offense. That sounds good to me, because I don't want to see any more horses, cattle, sheep, goats, anything, or chickens dead the next morning. Because it's not going to go straight up over your property. It's going to go over two, two, two houses down, or to the next street over before it explodes, and then that stick ends up in that other person's yard. We're talking about inconsiderate people, which we have a very large number of, and they have killed animals in our town, and I don't like it. The harder it is for them to get a permit, the better it is for everybody else.
Thanks, Noel. Any other public, public comment?
Yeah.
Good evening. John Garrati, one hundred and sixty-second Avenue. I'm going to speak on what Mr. Allbritton was talking about. I happen to live in Green Meadows. I have plenty of dogs, donkeys, horses, you name it, around me. He is correct. There've, there've always been, shocking, I'm agreeing with the councilman. There's always been legal fireworks in Florida. They're called consumer fireworks. They are in a separate section of any fireworks store you go to. So, what my concern is, and I'm not here to promote fireworks, but I don't want to see a neighbor that doesn't have an animal, right? Not be able to use a Florida-approved firework that does, to be clear. You ever seen on TV where we busted the fireworks stand because they had illegal fireworks? What's an illegal firework? An illegal firework is anything that explodes or goes up in the air. We have fire folks, we have a volunteer fire department, they're very, they know about this. So, let's say you're exploding fireworks all over the place, somebody calls the cops on you. Cops show up and say, "Dude, those are illegal fireworks," because they're labeled. When you buy from TNT Fireworks, or Neptune, or any of these big fireworks companies, they make you sign a release. All that stuff you bought, they're beautiful, they're illegal. Don't use them in these areas. And it's amazing, you, you can get the release, it's there. So, if we're going to pass a fireworks ordinance, I would like it to mirror what's legal already in the state of Florida. So, yes, people want to see go, things up in the air, all that. I'm not here to propose anything, but there are fireworks that are legal. They don't explode, they don't go in the air. Those are called consumer fireworks, and I'm not making this up, you can Google this. So, before we pass anything, he does have a valid point. I don't want to restrict completely. So, however we can find that happy medium, if we don't know what they are, some of the council people have said, "Do they exist? Let's take a trip to a fireworks store." You don't have to do that. Go online, they're there, you can click on them.
No, you can go into Publix and buy them.
Correct. You don't have to go too far. So, whatever we're going to pass, if we can just keep it along the lines of whatever's already legal, maybe we can find a happy medium, that's all I'm trying to say. So, there are legal fireworks. They don't explode, they don't go in the air. What he's talking about is a lower level of exploding fireworks in the air with lights. So, that's something different, it's new. Let's figure something out, a happy medium compromise, that's all I'm saying.
Great, thanks. I think we, we, yeah, we need to clarify here.
Yeah.
So, so those fireworks that are legal in Florida, the ones you can go to Publix and you can buy, they don't, they don't explode, they don't shoot up in the air, they're like, they go fizzy or something on your driveway.
This doesn't apply to them.
This does not apply to them.
Right.
This ordinance does not impact them at all, okay? They're specifically excluded from this. You can, you can do those, that this is not, what we're talking about are the ones that shoot up in the air, and then the standard ones that go boom, or the newer ones that apparently don't. I've never seen one actually do, I'm not familiar with it personally, but apparently don't go boom. Those are the ones that this ordinance is talking about, just to be clear. So, so the things that are in Publix, we're not talking about that. It already is, it already is. The definition of fireworks, we use it in a common way to talk about almost anything. But in the ordinance, the definition of fireworks is those things that shoot up in the sky. Illegal fireworks, correct. All right, is that, what else?
I, I think we beat this to death.
Pretty much, pretty much.
I think we've got something that we can...
And this was the easy one.
Yeah. Yeah, wait to see the next one.
All right, all right. Any other public comment? Seeing none, public comment closed.
Call the question.
Let's call the question.
Mayor, can I just, for the sake of summarizing, making sure we have everything in place? So, related to section four point one, we're going to amend that the seven hundred and fifty foot requirement to four hundred and fifty feet for residents being notified, correct?
No, stays at seven fifty.
No.
No, that's four fifty.
Notification.
Notification is four fifty.
Oh, the notification piece, sorry.
And, and we eliminated the objection.
Right, right. Okay. And then in two is going to remain the same, section three is going to remain, or subsection three is going to remain the same. In section four...
Same.
Remains the same. In section five, um...
Thirty.
We're going to reduce it from sixty to thirty days. And then the section below where it talks about they must collect the debris, we're saying instead of being collected immediately, collect it within twenty-four hours.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's a summary of all the changes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Correct.
So, if we could please call the question.
Yes. Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Allbritton?
Yes.
Mayor Brightcruz?
Yes.
Outstanding. Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate all the work on that.
We have to start.
All right, item number ten, please.
Is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the town of Southwest Ranch, I'm sorry, Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code, Article forty-five, Agricultural and Rural Districts zero four five dash zero three, zero three zero, Vacation Rental by creating subsection X to promulgate rules concerning the utilization of single-family residences as vacation rentals, providing for licensure, providing for codification, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Do I have a motion? Motion to approve? I heard two motions. I don't know which one was the motion, which was the second.
I'll take the second. I have some commentary.
Bob has the motion, Gary's second, thank you.
I have some commentary.
Yeah.
Couple of things, we talked about last time about the recycling.
Yeah.
I'd like to talk about it again and see if we can figure out some way to make that work.
Right.
The other thing, I meant to bring this up, and then it just had a senior moment, and I forgot about it last time. We don't call for, we don't call specifically for fire plan and exits. And I think that should be illuminated, and there should be a fire, like a hotel.
Right.
There's an exit sign, and there's a fire plan behind the door in case there's a fire. How to exit, what's, how to get out of here, you know, that kind of thing. I think that, I think we incur some liability by not having that or requiring that.
Keith, what's your, I mean, I know, I think the general rule is whatever we, we require here, we need for our residents as well, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so I think we may, if we do that, then all, every resident needs to provide that as well.
But a vacation home is a business.
One would think so, but in the state of Florida, it's not.
Doesn't think so.
Oh, okay, well, excuse me.
For being logical?
Yeah. Right, got it, okay. But can we work on the blue things, the blue containers?
I don't know. So, the recycling, you know, the...
No, can't work on that either.
Well, you know, you know what I think we can do, I don't think it's in this, but I think as we go down the path of getting more serious about recycling, I think we will be coming out with some things that apply across the, across the board to all residents.
Yeah, I think, personally, I think homes like that should be penalized, you know, for that, whether or not we have the staff to do that or whatever.
Right.
We need to get something in, in the works or on the books. You know, if we're going to go zero waste, we're going to be serious about it.
We've got to be serious.
We need to take it to, to the nth degree, you know, and go along that. I've rented vacation, I've been part of a group that rent vacation homes further up in northern Florida. They're a business. They have exit signs, they have the code, they have the hotel, restaurant division of the state. Check them out and everything. I mean, these are, these are pretty elaborate, and believe it or not, there's instructions on how you put out the recycling. And if it's like a ten thousand dollar fine if you don't do it exactly the way they want it.
I was just rented one in the, outside Breckenridge, and it was all there.
Yeah.
I mean, it didn't have the fire, but it had very strict instructions on recycling.
Yeah, I mean, they were really, they were really serious about it further up north, and, you know, I think we need to get to that point, because our, our area is becoming very desirable for this type of activity, as we all know, you know.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Keith, can I ask a question, please? Why is it that all the residents in town would have to put an evacuation map on their door if these vacation homes are rentals? People are in and out, don't know the layout really of the house. It's, it would be a safety hazard. Why would all the residents be required to do the same thing? Is that a Florida's law that's...
Our Florida legislature has made a determination that a municipality cannot treat a house that's being used as a rental for vacation rental differently than a single-family house. It needs to be treated the same.
Thank you.
But I can give you a number to call.
I do think, I do think, I don't, it's not an ordinance, but I do think, Andy, that it would make sense that in, you know, the instructions that we give to these folks when they sign up, that it should be a recommendation in there that they do it.
It's a good idea.
You know?
Do that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We can recommend it?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I think that's a great idea. We recommend it.
Right, we just recommend it. It's not required, but, you know.
Now, do they, do these, do these, under these vacation guide, I've read the whole thing, I just don't remember the thing, but it gets inspected, am I correct?
Yeah, once a year.
By code, or by fire, or by who? Code, okay. So, all right, that, that's helpful.
All right. Any public comment on this item?
John Garrati, one hundred and sixty-second Avenue. I don't mean to light up your night, but there are two kinds of Airbnbs or whatever we call these vacation rentals. The ones that are completely for the entire property, and I think the law specifies something. I'm going to go off topic for a second, not off of this, so we're talking about recycling. Look at your table, look at that table. I brought one in. Look at the plastic water bottles. Those vacation homes are going to generate hundreds of bags, right? So, if we're going to be a community that we're going to be first, we're in the Everglades, we're the, we're the green guys, we're, we're going to be different than everybody else, why don't we start making an example? Why don't we eliminate plastic bottles? It's hard to do that, don't get me wrong.
No, we're actually doing that.
It's, you know, because if we're talking about, yeah, we need to do this, that, and the other. Bob Hartman brought up that he went to the recycling plant, and the biggest problem is plastic, right? So, glass, they can do something with, but plastic clogs up the machines, it just costs money. So, that would be a big deal. We're Southwest Ranches, let's be a little different, you know, let's implement that. Let's not have plastic water bottles. We're talking like, hey, we're going to be green, but we're all holding plastic water bottles. That's one thing. So, this business, the vacation rentals, again, it's a business. We're talking about code having to come out once a year and check them out. So, are we kind of not leaning towards we should have some sort of a business licensing something? Because here's another topic. And the last time I was up here, and our own town attorney will tell you, businesses are a problem. Are they an addressable problem? I think every problem is addressable. Everything has a solution, except for death and taxes. That's the way I see it, but this needs to be addressed in a way that makes sense, because we can cover a lot of topics here. People make millions of dollars on Airbnbs, you guys use them. I, to be honest, I've never been to one, because I always stay in hotels, I got different stuff on credit cards, whatever that may be, but we have an opportunity here to set precedent with other towns with, you know, let's, let's, we can't implement like the law says, you can't tell them to do different things that a regular residence can, but let's try to talk about, hey, you know, our town doesn't really look too keenly on plastic bottles, so, you know, you're Airbnb, why don't you follow our town model? It'll probably happen, because this whole ordinance of, I'm sorry, this whole incinerator, and it's not just our problem, it's everybody in South Broward and Miami Dade, so let's use this as an opportunity, because I keep seeing businesses are a problem, home-based businesses, we have to fix that, because code enforcement isn't the solution to every single thing, so that's my two cents on that.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yeah.
I know most of you, Ed Gonzalez from Hollity Trail and Sunshine Ranches. Guys, what I, I see in here is every one of these Airbnbs that has started up like on Sterling Road has created nothing but havoc for the people that live around them. I think our goal and your goal should be, how do we create rules that either stops them or slows them way down? Because a lot of them are doing just overnight parties. I see it all the time, they come in the big brown and black trucks, unload all those people and all hell breaks loose till around midnight, 1:00 in the morning, and the only people paying the price are the people that live next door to these. And I find it offensive that all of us paid millions of dollars to live in here, to have a business right next door to you that's taking advantage of all of our good nature and our wonderful homesites that we have here. It's ruining for the rest of us, and I can see some of us getting up and leaving this area if this keeps up. So, start thinking about that. We want to keep the residents that we have, the people that are paying our taxes, not these people that are coming in here and making a buck at the backs of us. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. Any other public comment? Seeing none. Yeah, Ed, I, I agree 100% in, that's really our challenge and that's what we've been working on, and we've been really applying our, our noise ordinance, our, a lot of, a lot of ordinances that apply to everybody, but these seem to be the, the primary abusers of them, and, and actually some have shut down and closed down because of it, because the fines are getting up $5,000 a shot. And so, so we're doing the best, but we, we are, we have handcuffs on based on what we can do because of what the legislator has, legislation has done for us.
Mayor?
Yeah.
In the vacation guide, just to point this out, there is a specification as to how many individuals can be there overnight. I, I don't know about visitation, but I kind of think it addresses that, to be honest with you. But overnight, it's, it's very limiting to, to, two individuals per bedroom.
Yeah.
There are some, some fairly stringent rules on the vacation homes, which would be the Airbnbs also, you know, as far as that goes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Maybe not for long.
Yeah. All right, yeah, David.
Dressing Mr. Garrati's issue, last night, if you remember during the meeting that we had last night with the solid waste incinerator, anti-incinerator, zero-waste task force, Representative Bartman spoke about legislative preemption. When, when there were, when there was a discussion whether we can ask Publix to not sell plastic or not use plastic bags, and this might be something that could, legislative, there may be a legislative preemption that may be dealing with that issue about banning plastic bottles.
Right. Yeah, no, I think it's a great point, we do, and, and we've talked about this and I think we're starting the effort, because we do have to lead by example, and, and these plastic bottles have got to go, you know? I know I've got, I've got more, seems like every place I go, they give me another one of these, you know, bottles that's, you know.
Too convenient.
Stays cold and whatever, and you're, and it's meant to be refilled, we should be bringing those in ourselves and refilling them. So, all right, where are we? Okay, I think we are good, any other comments on this item? Seeing none, if we can please call, call the roll on it.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Brightcrus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'm, I'm excited that it's passed on the second reading and that it's now in place, because I think this is a big step towards.
Gives us a baseline, we can now start applying.
Right, 100%. Where's Julio, there he is, that's all yours now.
Man for Julio, knock yourselves out.
All right, item number 11.
This is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code, Section 010-030, terms defined, Section 035-030, home offices, Section 045-050, permitted and prohibited uses, and Section 070-120, promotional signs pertaining to home-based businesses, providing for codification, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Is there a motion on this item?
Motion?
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any comments? Once again, this is bringing our code up to, in compliance with the state coding. Any public comment on this item?
So with this, we're going to allow home businesses, our commercial businesses, our developments, to put their signs out on the road, on the edge of the road, in the swale? Is that what's going to happen?
No, 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 that's not what this is, no.
Then why has it been allowed on Griffin Road to happen? With Acadia, or whatever the name of it, Kia?
Akai.
Akai. They have it out there in front of their fence, out there on the road? Why has that not been taken care of? I reported it, it's theirs, so I guess everyone can now put their for-sale sign or whatever out on the road? Is that what's going to be, because that one's out there? If you do it for one, you got to do it for everybody else. So why is that sign allowed? I reported it, told them to put my name on it. So, give me an answer. Otherwise, it's all legal for anyone to put their sign out there right on the road for, for sale, or their business sign.
You're up.
John Garrati, 162nd Avenue. This is, if I'm not, if I'm reading this correctly, this is the home-based business signage rule, if we will? So, to clear up Noel's question, I think that's for home-based businesses and the 559.955 doesn't allow signage that's visible from the street, so the key word here is, I have signs all over the place in my home-based business, but you can't see them. They're for my videos, they're for my eyeballs, my customers, for whatever Instagram, for whatever you want to do. So, 559.955, the home, I sound like a lawyer, home-based business law doesn't allow a sign. Now, that is kind of contradictory a little bit, because I've seen where it could clash where some of these home-based businesses that were prior, so I don't know, a little clarity would be nice on that, because I've seen where guy's been here 30 years and he's got horses, and he's got stables, ex-stables, super proud of his house, super proud of his business, so what happens to them? Because of a new law that doesn't allow that. I'm the newer version, I don't need a sign, I'm totally okay. Inside my property that you can't see, I'm going to have as many signs as I want, as long as it doesn't violate the 559.955. So, I would like to, I would like clarity on the folks that had a previous sign that is a home-based business, what happens to them? Do they have to take them down? Because that might not be too fair, but again, it's not my law, so that's, that would be the question I would have for that.
Any other public comment on this item? Seeing none. Jeff, you're here, you know, you've made the trip out, you haven't said anything yet, I feel like, you know, any, any thoughts, comments on what we've just heard?
I have a working microphone.
And you have a working microphone, let's take advantage of it.
This ordinance doesn't place any new restrictions on, on signage. Home-based businesses weren't allowed to have signs visible from the street before, and they're not now, this doesn't change that. If you are an agricultural business and you have, and you're a farm, as defined, then there's a different set of circumstances that apply to you, and so somebody with stables might be in that, you know, in that circumstance, but they've never been allowed for home businesses.
Great, thank you, Jeff. All right, any other council comment on this item? Seeing none, if we can please call the question.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Brightcrus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number 12, please.
An ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending Section 090-100 of the Unified Land Development Code, ULDC, entitled roadway capacity, construction, and design standards, prohibiting the use of phosphogypsum to create or repair town or private roads, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Mayor, this is first reading, it comes to you from the LPA with the recommendation of approval, all the testimony given at that hearing will be incorporated herein by reference.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Keith.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item, is there any further council comment on this item? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, public comment closed. Once again, David, thank you for bringing this to us, if we can please call the question.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Brightcrus?
Yes. Item number 13, please.
Item number 13 is a resolution of the Town Council of Southwest Ranches, Florida, authorizing the town administrator to prepare and to submit a grant application to the Resilient Florida Program to help fund a vulnerability and sea level rise assessment in the amount of $200,000.0 cents. Authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into any and all agreements necessary and proper to effectuate the intent of this resolution and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, is there any council comment on this?
Mayor, the Broward Water Board is also studying this real hard for the entire South Florida area, Palm Beach, Broward, North Dade, this is high on their agenda, so, you know, we might be able to get some information from them or share our information with them, one of the two.
Good, good. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none? Please call the question.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Brightcrus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number 14, please.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving an agreement with Her Homes LLC in the amount of $747,706.95 to complete the Southwest 63rd Street and Southwest 185th Way Drainage Improvement Project, approving a budget amendment to the fiscal year 2022, 2023 town budget, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing an effective date.
Thank you, we have a motion on the item?
Motion approved.
Have a motion and a second, any comment from the council on this item? Seeing none, any public comment on this item? Seeing none? Please call the question.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Brightcrus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Deborah, can you read the next item into the record?
Certainly, Mayor. This is a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the selection of Assistant Town Administrator Russell Muniz for the position of Town Administrator, directing the town attorney to negotiate an agreement with Assistant Town Administrator, Assistant Town Administrator Russell Muniz for the position of Town Administrator, which establishes the scope, compensation, and benefits for his services, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into the agreement and providing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, if, if I object to this, do we keep Andy?
No.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
He's joining the retirement club.
Yeah, I don't think, I think, I think I'd have to twist his arm pretty good.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah. All right, we have a motion and a second. I'd like to just make a couple of comments, that I, I appreciate, one of the things that Andy has done and has talked about since day one here is building a team that consistently gets stronger and better. And, and that shows up in a lot of ways, but one of the ways that it shows up is tonight, that we have somebody here on the dais that is, is ready to step right into those shoes and pick up without missing a beat. All the different elements, all the projects, all the, the staffing challenges and things like that, and Russell, you've done an amazing job. You, you know, you have my full confidence and I, and I believe that that's true for the full council, and, and we're looking forward, you know, we've really appreciated all that Andy has done, he's done an amazing job, but everybody is different, everybody has different skills, and so we're looking forward to seeing, you know, some new things and some new, taking on some new challenges that, you know, that are, you know, that you have exceptional skills in, so looking forward to it, I'm excited about this item and looking forward to the years ahead, so.
Mayor, can I just say one thing?
Yes.
On procedure? So, Andy's resignation is effective December 15, so, which means that you would probably want to bring a contract back at the latest November?
Right.
You know, meeting so that everything's plugged in, ready to go. All this resolution does is it authorizes me to commence the discussion with Russell about the contract, to formulate, and to bring back to you all for approval. Several of you have already contacted me about things that you'd like to see in the contract, please keep doing so, so that I have everyone's comments and notes and can incorporate it and try to do this as easily as possible.
Good, good.
And, and Russell, when I made that comment, it was just in jest, because I, I'm glad you're, I'm glad you're there.
As I mentioned to you, there's nobody that's going to miss Andy more than me, so.
Yeah.
Mayor, if you'll indulge, can I?
Sure, please.
Read a prepared statement that I put together, just really quickly before we take the vote, I promise I won't take too much time. I just would like to take the opportunity to thank you, Mayor, and the entire Town Council for having the confidence in me to extend this opportunity. For me, this is the opportunity of a lifetime. As you know, I've served three municipal governments over my 28-year municipal career, and I can't think of a better community to serve than Southwest Ranches. I know I have some very large shoes to fill, figuratively speaking, of course, but I promise you that, that I will work diligently to ensure that the residents of Southwest Ranches continue to be served with a commitment to excellence, respect, and fairness. I'd like to thank Andy for being a great mentor and friend over the past nine years. Under his leadership, the town is in a much better state than he found it, and I know this is true for me personally and professionally. I'd also like to thank Keith Poliakoff, our esteemed attorney, for providing expert legal counsel and safeguarding me from the perils that abound in this profession. I look forward to his continued counsel and guidance. I'm also excited about this opportunity and this great team of staff we have built together. They inspire me every day to be better and to continue to work for the betterment of our residents. In closing, and at the risk of sounding corny, I'll say I've spent nine years in the stable and I'm ready to run, so thank you.
Great, thank you, Russell. Any public comment on this item?
I think in the contract, there needs to be one additional addendum to it, that the town has no liability in the future for loss of hair. Because.
Why didn't you say that to me earlier?
I don't think I would.
Keith, in your point, we know it's genetic. I think that needs to be in there to protect ourselves. Thank you.
It's going to happen.
Thanks, Noel. Yeah, Ed.
I wanted to thank you personally, you've done a excellent and a great job, I've been
and a great job. I've been on a few boards, and you've been a great guy to guide us. And I wanted to thank you again. Looking forward, hopefully you can follow in his shoes. He does a wonderful job.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks.
John Garrati, 162nd Avenue. One of the things I'd like to say about this is I've had the pleasure of working with Mr. Burns. Initially, we butted heads and argued immediately, as I do with some people, right away. But what I'm going to say, and this isn't ass kissing, if I can use those terms in here, Russell Muniz, my opinion of this town was in the toilet. You know that. When you go through certain things, I've been here 22 years, so toilet's kind of large. But one of the things that gentleman sitting over there offered me was a voice. Let me tell you something. When I met him, and didn't get hit it off the best with Andy, but we're cool now, and we speak, and everybody's on the same page, because you get more and more involved in the town, and you learn the processes, and you learn the do's and don'ts. But you know what Russell offered me? I was furious. I was at my wits' end. That man right there sat down with me for 45 minutes between a meeting that had nothing to do with me and offered me some calm, some peace and quiet, some, hey, you know what? I can't fix your problem, but why don't we sit down and talk? You know, that's a professional. And again, it's not to kiss your ass, Russell, but it's the truth, and I don't, you hardly see that from people. So, because of Russell, me and Andy were able to work certain things out and communicate. Andy actually gave me the rules on the town. Hey, Steve, you come up here and you talk, why don't you learn what you're talking about? You know, so that's progress. Because if you ask me about Southwest Ranches when I got involved with my problems, it was disparaging. Like, those agreements that we are made to sign and we don't sign them, disparaging one-on-one. But, Russell, I think with your knowledge, right, and one thing I'd like to see in your contract, I've never seen Andy's contract or anybody else's contract, but I've had very big run-ins with legal departments, especially in this town. Not going to name names, because it's the end of the meeting and people want to go home. I'd like to see the town administrator administrate the town and manage the town versus my opinion, and this is my opinion, and there are some that match my opinion, to be able to direct legal when it needs to be directed, not just an ego contest of this is what I do and this is the way it's always been done. And Russell, you know what I'm talking about. So, if that can happen, would be a bonus, but congratulations, dude. You've earned it. You work hard, and you dress well, bro. So, that's what I wanted to say. But seriously, you do a good job, because if you don't do that with a simple resident that has a beef with the town, and you just talk to them, you know? Julio, the same way, you know? Discussions. Communication is what manages any business, any town, anywhere. So, that's what I wanted to say about Russell, so. Good job, bro.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, public comment closed. Any other council comment? Seeing none. If we can please call the question.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Absolutely.
Mayor Brightcrus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mayor?
Yes.
May I interrupt for just a moment?
Sure. Sure.
It's what I say, when I got here 11 years ago, there were three members of the current staff who were here then, December, Emily, and Susan. And they were doing an outstanding job for the town then. They continue to do that. And over those 11 years, we've built a team, just phenomenal. I would, person by person, position by position, pound for pound, we match up as well as anybody, anywhere. Russell's been here for nine years. He's been an integral part of that. I couldn't have done what I did without him. And for the council to recognize that and pass the torch this way, I'm having a proud parent moment over here.
Good.
So, thank you for that.
Well deserved.
Yep.
Thank you, Andy. All right, item number 16, please.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a piggyback of Florida NASBO Value Point Contract, I won't read the code, for the issuance of a purchase order in an amount not to exceed $35,474.50. Presidio Inc. for Cisco Network Switches, approving a fiscal year 2022-2023 budget amendment from the general fund, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute all documents necessary to effectuate the intent of this resolution and providing an effective date.
Great. Thank you. Do we have a motion on this item?
Motion approved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion from the council on this item?
Yeah, just a couple of quick comments. Russell and I talked about this the other day. I understand what our approach is. I just want to give two thumbs up to Presidio. I looked at my notes. When I was with Burger King, we spent $14 million with Presidio for new network switches and routers for all over the U.S. And then when I helped split Tyco and ADT, we had about a $60 million contract just for Canada. I split Canada with the two companies. These guys do an outstanding job, and as well, they'll do all the planning for you and run the plans back to you. They're a five-star organization, so.
Thanks, Bob. Any other comments? Any public comments on this item? Seeing none, please call the question.
Councilmember Hartman? Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Brightcrus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. So now we'll get to the big item. Now we'll start the meeting.
Yeah.
All right. So, we have a list here. Julio, maybe if you could come up and, and kind of walk us through this. But while he comes up, what we're going to do is, we've been looking more and more at items. There's a balance. There's a balance between proactive and reactive code enforcement. And historically, the town has been shying away from proactive and really focusing on reactive. State of Florida made some changes that made that a little bit more difficult, and more and more, we've heard from residents that there's certain items that we want to keep as reactive, and there's other items that are frustrating, and we don't want to create hard feelings between neighbors, and it would perhaps be better handled in a more proactive fashion. So, we asked Julio to do some, some research for us and to look at records, and just based on his experience for him and his team, and provide some feedback on, kind of where we're at. He's listed items that already are proactive, some items that, that he thinks might be also, and then there's some other items that I think from other council members and sources. So, maybe, Julio, if you could just kind of walk us through those items real quick.
Sure, Mayor. Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you've indicated, we did have some items where we were already proactive on. You know, those items included any bulk violations, any unmaintained lots or overgrown lots, any unauthorized fill or grading without a permit, any lighting violations, and potholes that were unmaintained on private roads. Obviously, any public roads we maintain, but private roads, we essentially wouldn't, they weren't required to do anything unless we received a complaint. So, those were the five items that council had previously directed code enforcement to be proactive on. But you, we were tasked with identifying issues around town that have been problematic or where we have received complaints from residents indicating, you know, they would, certain items they want addressed but don't want to be a complainant. They don't want to stir, you know, stir up the neighbor and then cause a feud between, between neighbors. So, with that being said, we provided council with a recommendation or suggested items that we encounter on our day-to-day business. Those items were any work, any construction that was done without a permit. You know, we have people around town, contractors, unfortunately, try to do work without obtaining the appropriate permits, or try to get work started without a permit. So, those, that's one of the issues we see around town. We've always thought it was an issue, but we were not proactive on. So, unfortunately, we would require complaints, and lots of times, we'd get a call from a neighbor. They'd inform us, but they did not want to go on record and provide their name, because they wanted to remain amicable with their neighbors. So, that was one of the biggest issues we, we suggested. Aside from that, we also have commercial vehicles around town. You know, there are some exceptions. We do allow commercial vehicles to an extent, but, you know, anything exceeding that allowance would be a violation. That's another issue that we believe is a major problem around town. One other issue we see around town is removal of trees. Any protected species should require a permit and proper mitigation if they choose to remove a tree. Fortunately, we do see that going around town. We have, you know, contractors or landscapers that go around town offering removal of a tree. They don't come into town to obtain the proper permits. So, that's one thing that we would, we would suggest that you allow code enforcement to address proactively. Another issue is open burning, and that is essentially people will stockpile debris from their yard or any kind of debris in the yard, and they'll just light it up on fire to avoid having to take it to the dump site or waiting for bulk trash. You know, sometimes they just have a lot of debris and want to get rid of it. So, they'll light a fire. Obviously, for many reasons, that's not something the town should allow. It's a hazard. It's a nuisance. And the only time it's allowed is with a permit from the Department of Forestry. So, unless they have a permit, any open burning is a violation. So, that's a, for obvious reasons, that's a major issue that we believe should be addressed proactively by code. And one other item is, in many cases, we've had a previous violation where they come into compliance, and then weeks, months, or possibly even years later, the same violation occurs. For obvious reasons, the person who complained originally doesn't want to be the one calling every time the violation occurs. So, we believe that any violation that has been previously addressed, we should have the ability to, if we see the same violation occurring, we should have the ability to reopen that case and cite a violator for any previously addressed complaints. Now, once we submitted this to council, council came back and also believed there were some, some other suggestions that we may, they suggested that we should consider for proactive code enforcement. One of those suggestions were clearing of property without a permit, which is akin to removal of trees, but clearing is where you just get a bulldozer and just bulldoze the entire property, knock down several trees. That can be an issue for many reasons. One, you can, you know, they're probably not doing the proper inspections. They're getting a licensed arborist to survey the property to determine what trees are protected. And secondly, there's a, a large possibility that you could be impacting wetlands when doing so. So, one of the things we require for clearing is that they go to the county to ensure the area where they're going to be conducting any clearing does not involve any wetlands. They're not going to be, you know, adversely impacting wetlands. So, that's a suggestion that was provided by member of council. And other, another suggestion is, although we are already proactive with bulk, there are times where after a storm, we might have some bulk debris that is, it's not expected, but it wouldn't be right to have certain debris, just, you know, a dead tree limb just hanging around. Of course, people want to maintain the properties, take care of the properties, so we should have some consideration when, when that happens. If we do have a big storm that creates larger-than-normal bulk debris, that we have some leniency and some discretion on that matter. And then another thing that we didn't mention, but, you know, it seemed to be an important issue for council are shipping containers. Especially, you know, you know, recent days, we've had a lot of people who are not only bringing shipping containers, but also utilizing them for, for other reasons, such as we've had people now using shipping containers and converting them into a guest house or, you know, any kind of living quarters. So, you know, shipping containers are allowed under our code with certain parameters. So, that's something that I believe council suggested we be proactive on as well. And these are the options, the items we have up for discussion tonight.
Awesome. Great. Thank you. One general question I have for you. Tell me a little bit about your workload if these were to all, if we were to say, great, go for it. These are all good ideas. Let's go proactive for them. How does that affect your workload and your, your ability to do your job?
Well, Mayor, that, we're going to have to utilize a bit of discretion in doing so. Obviously, we can't just go crazy and start, you know, going after all these issues all at once. We have to be very considerate of our time and, you know, our, our staffing. Currently, with our, with our current staff, it'd be very difficult to try and just go full-fledged, 100%, and going after all of these issues.
Right.
We're going to have to really just pick and choose, let me take that back, just be considerate of what we can handle.
Yeah.
You know, we, I mean, the same way we've done before with our already-approved proactive items, you know, we try to systemically address issues, but also be cognizant of the fact that we can't create 100 cases, that then we wouldn't be able to properly provide notice, you know, make sure the cases are, are all intact and just complete, make sure all proper notices are done. And we want to make sure we're thorough with our cases, so we can eventually win should they be contested in court. So, it'd be very difficult to just increase, you know, the amount of cases we're producing.
Right.
So, we, we want the ability to be able to go after something if we see it, but we're, we have to be cognizant of how many things we go after. So.
Right.
It's going to take some strategic planning on how we do this.
Great. That makes sense to me. So, that kind of leads me to just kind of a thought that I think what we need to do at this point, I want to talk through these, but I think, I don't, I don't, I don't think we can say, great, you know, Julio, do it, man. We love it. I think we're going to have to put together a bit of a plan here, right? Pick out one or two that I think we feel are most key and say, okay, this is what we want to code to be proactive on. And then frankly, I think we need to put together, if this is the direction we want to go, I think we need to recognize that, and we're going to need to support it from a budget standpoint in the future. Otherwise, we're just kidding ourselves, right? We're just doing kind of a feel-good thing. If we're, if we're serious about this, I think it's going to take more personnel to actually do this, and, and I think we're going to have to work that into the budget. And so, I don't know.
I concur with that. One of the things that code fortunately does is I think, I believe it pays for itself in the long run. The idea is not, not to do that. It's to come into compliance.
Right.
But we don't have, sometimes we don't have people who really don't care if they come into compliance, and it ends up costing them, you know?
Correct.
And stuff like that. All these items that are listed here, are we going to go through them all, or?
I think we should.
Yeah, absolutely. I'd like to add a couple.
Okay.
To, as, as we go through them.
Okay.
You know, so, do you want me to lead off?
Well, no, no. Let's, let's just do some just general comments. Is that, are we, are we good? Does that make sense, anything, before we get into the actual list itself?
Mayor, just explain to, Julio, how would you enforce work done without a permit? If someone's putting up a fence, you drive by, you see it, that's one thing. If you don't see that fence, if a neighbor calls, is that reactive, proactive? What happens then? Does the neighbor still have to say that he's the complainant? How's that going to work?
Sure. So, essentially, if we're given the green light to be proactive on these issues, even if we see, if we know work is being done, but we're not able to see it, we would ask the neighbor, you know, if we can go on their property to be able to document the violation. By the mere fact of them allowing us on the property, or even if they call it in, the fact that we're allowed to be proactive, they would not have to be the complainant. We're essentially tasked with being proactive, so we can address that issue proactively without requiring a complainant.
Is that legal, Mr. Keith?
I'm sorry, we're debating dark sky ordinances over here. What was the question?
I, I was asking, work done without a permit, how is Julio going to see that? Is he going to drive by and see somebody putting up a fence, or does he wait for the neighbor to call to say that the fence is going in illegally, and?
And the reality is, is if you're proactively enforcing code, you're proactively enforcing it, meaning you're driving around and recognizing violations and actually enforcing those violations.
But if you don't see that violation and the neighbor calls, does the neighbor still have to be responsible for saying he's the one that turned them in?
I will tell you, under the Florida statute, yes.
Yes.
The reality in most municipalities is no. But under the Florida statute, the answer is yes.
Okay. Okay. So, this is, this is what I- Okay. So this is, this is what I, this is what I think we should do, and I'm open to other suggestions. But I think we should, we should walk through these just from the standpoint of if there's anything on any of these that we have a particular concern about, or we feel like this is, this is one of the top ones, um, if we have any questions about it, things like that. But let's just walk through them one at a time. And then, um, what I'd like to do is then maybe we take it back and, I don't know, maybe we rank them or something like that, so that we can then provide Andy and Russell some feedback, Julio some feedback, and so, so you all can kind of then gather it and determine, these are the top three that it seems like the council is, is mostly concerned about. And then we have a follow-up discussion to talk about the top three to five and, and pick out the top three.
I'm not happy with the number three.
I'm just trying to find a number. I'm not, I mean, I would love to do more, but we've got to come up with a number that he can.
Here's my reason for that. Okay.
Go ahead.
Bob can relate, and Jim can relate. You get a call from a neighbor, they don't want to go on the record, but they want you to do something.
No, I get that, yeah.
You, you call in, okay? If it's proactive, I'm, I'm tired, I'm tired of having my yards screwed up. I'm tired of getting paintball shot at my house. Tired of all that.
That's why we're having the discussion.
No, no, but the point I'm trying to make is the, the, the larger the list, the less that's going to happen to us. It doesn't have, it doesn't mean that he's going out and his team is going out and finding all this. It's that we're calling it in because people are calling us.
But what we're saying, Gary, is that he is going out. If we, we've got to do this.
If we call it, yeah.
We've got to do this. If we're saying it's proactive, we can't have him, if he starts, doesn't have the resources to do the job and starts picking and choosing, then we're in deep trouble. Because, because then we're not being consistent across the town. So if we want to make the list longer, I'm okay with that, because I like, there's, there's very few things here that I don't like. But we, and, and I agree with your statement that it pays for itself. But what it does do is it increases expense and it increases income. So if we're going to do this, then we need to direct him to, for additional staff, so he can do, so he can do this.
I'm not against that.
Okay. Well, then, then, okay, well then, I'm, I'm fine with that too. I just, you know, we just, we just passed a budget, and I was like, this is kind of a weird time to be saying we need to, you know, yeah, need to, need to increase spending, so.
No, but we've got a phenomenal problem, and you see it, and I really see it.
Yeah, I know you do.
And that is where people are weaponizing code.
Correct.
And it's neighbor against neighbor.
It's not.
And, and it's almost every item on this list.
Yeah.
And it's, and it's not going to go away tomorrow. At the, at the, the way, and the way we're doing it, it's not going to go away at all. But if we change to proactive, I think that'll tap it down quite a bit.
Okay, perfect. So let me, let me change my proposal then. Let me change my proposal then. Make a great point. So let's look at it this way. Let's go through it, and tonight, let's give a thumbs up or thumbs down to each one of these. And then Julio will give it to you to take back and to say, what do you need from a staff position if you're going to do that? Okay? Does that sound better?
Yeah.
Sound good?
Yeah, it sounds like a plan.
All right, let's do it. All right. Work done without a permit. Anybody have an issue with that?
I do. I have an issue with it.
Okay, tell us about it.
I, I, I just, um, speaking with residents, um, and I, I really have been reaching out to a lot of residents about this issue, these issues. They don't want an overactive code enforcement. They don't want us to become Weston. They want to be left alone. Um, and I've got to listen to those voices.
Okay, I understand that. And, and I, I'm glad you brought up the point, they don't want us to be Weston, because we hear that a lot. Here's, here's my response to that, and that is that if we had the same ordinance as Weston, which means is that your, your house is too pink or too beige, or your trash can is poking out the outside of your fence or whatever. Yeah, you know, um, your mailbox flag is starting to get a little faded, you know? Then, then, then that's what we'd be Weston, okay? We don't have those rules, and so we will never be Weston unless we make up those rules, and, and we never will. So, so we will never be Weston. But then there's the other element of what you're saying. So I always object to it. We're, we're not, we're not Weston. But then there is the element that I believe in, that if you're going to have an ordinance, and we're not going to have an ordinance that your house is too pink or too orange or whatever, but we are going to have an ordinance that says, you know, you can't have 25 trucks standing there. And, um, and if you're going to have an ordinance, you've got to make a decision. Either you want to enforce that ordinance, or if you don't want to enforce it, then get it off the books.
Get rid of it.
Right? Get rid of it. You've got to be one or the other. And so, so if we're going to have ordinances on the books, we need the tools to enforce them. Otherwise, um, we're, we're spinning our wheels, we're pretending, we're playing games. And so I get that we don't want, um, as a gen, that's one of the reasons why I moved out here. So I, I totally get it. I wanted to be left alone, right? And so I totally get that. So, so I guess, David, I, I, what I would say is if you're saying to me that this one in particular, work done without a permit, is too intrusive, and that one you would prefer not to be on the list.
Correct.
That I get. But if you're just saying in general that we don't want anything to be proactive, then I'm, then I'm, I'm less comfortable.
Too intrusive, and that's what residents are saying, that they don't want an overactive code enforcement.
On this item?
On, this is one of them.
Okay.
And, and, and bringing up the other issue that I've had a big concern about, when you, Jim, and myself were first elected, one of the first things that we brought up was moving dark skies ordinance to proactive. I'm still driving around, and I don't see it enforced.
Yeah.
And when was the last time you checked dark skies ordinance?
I, I don't personally do the dark sky ordinance, but Manfred just went out to enforce the night sky ordinance. He's the officer that, he's actually now currently out.
Okay, all right. It's, it, I mean, uh.
Yeah, but David, David, let, let me interject something into your argument here. Okay, there's a distinction here with work, work being done without a permit. If you're doing a repair job, that's not this.
Right.
Right.
This is building a shed, a barn, something on the property line. This is building something illegal without permitting, and that's a big problem in the ranches. A very, very large problem. And the, the neighbors are scared to death to say anything half the time, and they've got a shed sitting right up smack up against their line that's probably poorly built, corners were cut, and we get 120 mile an hour wind, and the sucker goes right through their patio or pool and all that. This would help prevent that, okay? And I get it, the whole Western, you know, uh, argument about all that, but this would be really helpful, I think, being proactive.
Can I throw one thing out on that one, Mayor?
Sure.
You may want to just put the word significant in front of it, and that would bridge both positions together.
There you go. Well, I mean, what do you think, Julio? Does that, does that make, sorry, does that make, uh? I, I guess at the end of the day, Julio, you have to feel comfortable that you can enforce these things. And, and there was an interesting distinction made here between somebody that is, you know, doing good, solid work, that they didn't pull a permit, versus somebody who's kind of slapping up a building and, you know, on the weekends when nobody's looking, and, um, you know, the first good storm is going to be in somebody else's yard, you know? I don't know. I don't know if you can make that distinction or not.
Well, Mayor, Keith just indicated that, you know, adding the word significant work, which I, I understand the concept, but I would need that to be outlined. I don't want to be the one to make that call determining.
Sure.
What is significant.
See, I, I don't agree with you, Julio. I think that an officer, whether it's police or otherwise, has the ability to make discretion when enforcing their law. Um, and, you know, if it's work done without a permit, you're talking changing a valve on a hose to a, you know, an AC repair, to replacement of a front door. I mean, the, the list could be endless if you just say work without a permit.
Yeah, well, I think, I think what we would need is some sort of a definition for significant, what it is, whether it's a, whether it's a cost amount, whether it's a size, whatever, you know? There needs to be something to give guidance. Because significant, what's significant to me versus you? I mean, I wouldn't want to be in your shoes trying to defend something that, you know, seems significant to one person and it seems totally insignificant.
Again, we're not defending it. All you're doing is you're saying that the code officer has the ability to cite them.
Yeah, but I want, I don't, I don't want, okay, there's two sides to this, you know? We want, we want to be able to, to take some of the burden off of, of council members and others that are, you know, having to go through this reporting process. But on the other hand, we don't want to give our residents, you know, subject our residents to, to lose a, a definition to where they don't know whether they're following code or not. You know? I mean, we, we've got it, we've got a, we've got to define it. I, I don't think there's any question about, does it, does it need to be exact? No, but we've got to provide guidance. We've got to provide guidance. We can't just, significant is, is too broad a word. It can mean diff, totally different things to people.
By the way, let me make it clear, I have no problem with you all creating a definition, figuring out what you mean. But I, I just want to remind everyone, work without a permit is work without a permit. It's governed by the Florida Building Code. It's a legal regardless. So, and still can be cited. So all you're doing is giving your code officer the tool to go ahead and proactively cite someone on his own volition, uh, should he see work done without a permit. So i- it's a little different, but you could absolutely define at what point it's proactive, and, but I'm just suggesting that maybe you create that parameter to bridge the two sides.
Right. So maybe we're, that makes sense. So, so maybe where we're at on the first one here, and please, somebody else jump in there.
Mayor, if I, if I could, I'm able to attend a lot of the code hearings, and there are a number of hearings where they are work done without a permit. And, and I do agree with Keith, uh, they should have a permit. But they're allowed, when they come in here, to get a permit or to apply for a permit before any fine or any penalty is done. In that process, I'm sure that they have to submit the proper drawings, the proper everything, before they can get that permit, all right? So it's really not that we're punishing them, we're just making them do the right thing, and that it's built to code, whatever it is that they're doing is up to code. So there's no fine levied the first time. They have the opportunity to correct it, but if you don't catch them, or if you don't go after them, then they're going to do what they want to do.
Vote is all about compliance. Excuse me, Gary.
You're sorry.
This is in my top three. You can ask Julio. I was on the phone with him last week on somebody putting a public-sized generator in their backyard. Do they have any permits?
Yes, they did.
They did? Fantastic. But I always call him or I call Rod, do we have permits on this work going on? Your street, somebody called me not long ago, they put up a garage in the backyard. Okay. Then another one calls me on the other side, what is it, 196, saying, oh, well, these people are putting up an extension on their house. We look into that. This, I get people walking the dog when I'm driving down like 188th that know me that say, hey, Bob, did you see that? It's always the same thing. They all want me to take care of it for them. To me here, I believe we should quantify, because somebody called me on a neighbor that basically put two pieces of, um, fence that you buy at Home Depot, the prefab fence, around their water system. They don't want to see it from the road. Like, what did it cost them? 75, 100 bucks to do that? To me, I don't know if that's the right number that everybody would agree on, but I believe significance has to be part of it, because if somebody's throwing up a garage without the first permit, shame on them.
Right.
If somebody's, well, not replacing, but like I said, the example of, of their water system with some cover up.
I agree 100%.
It's hard. It's hard to say, ooh, you're doing, you're breaking the law.
I think we just need to define what significant is.
Do we want to, do we want to put a dollar value on it?
Yeah, I think we could.
Something like $500?
Oh, I was going way higher than that.
Yeah, I was actually thinking like $2,500, but, uh.
Actually, Mayor, maybe we change.
But I don't, I don't know. Yes, I think we should put a number on it, and I'm not tied to $2,500. Just telling you what.
To jump in what I wrote, uh, any life safety concerns, because that always has to be a predominant one. Or work performed in excess of $2,500 without a permit.
I don't know if I'd go that high. You can buy a hell of a lot of concrete and wood for $2,500 bucks to pave over your yard.
Thousand bucks.
I like that better.
To you. Gary.
Yeah, I'm following.
Yeah, Mayor, I'm trying to jump in, but.
Yeah, well.
I always let you guys go first. Significant work or work without a permit is, is admittedly vague, but it seems to be the issue is construction. Building something, putting up a fence, putting something, and maybe if we make it, construction without a permit might get you more to where you're trying to, to go. Not every air conditioner, every front door, every, you know, every little thing that somebody might do. But if somebody's going to build something without a permit and we catch them, we're, in some cases, maybe doing them a favor, because they might be building it in the wrong place.
Right.
So if you say construction without a permit, I think that might make it a little easier for Julio, and, and it, it seems to get closer to, to really what you're all describing and looking for.
Right. Good. So some feedback on that. I do think that's one of the, one of the biggies. I think that's a high priority for everybody up here, so. All right, let's move on to the next one. Commercial vehicles either too many or not registered to the property.
That's pretty easy.
I think that's pretty straightforward, yeah. Would you agree?
Yes, Mayor.
Yeah. I, I definitely think that's, uh, that's one that's worth being on the list.
It's in that top 10.
Yeah.
What are commercial vehicles? You talking about trucks or any commercial vehicle?
Commercial vehicles.
Airplanes, boats, trucks, what?
I mean, a boat normally isn't a commercial vehicle. That's usually a recreation.
Fishing vehicle. I mean, if you're using it for, as a fishing.
It could be. I, I don't understand what you're asking. Yes, commercial vehicles, yes.
Yeah. I mean, if it was like a fishing company and they parked a boat at the house or something, I mean, two boats, three boats at the house, if it was a commercial.
Is a boat a vehicle?
It's a vessel, but.
It's a vessel.
Yeah.
No, it is, it is a vehicle, but that's not under our definition of commercial vehicle.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we're talking about something bigger than a car, something, you know, work trucks, vans.
Like a van.
Yeah, something large that's used to haul loads, things of that nature.
Landscaping trucks.
Mayor, if I can, if I may clarify, a commercial vehicle, um, you know, excuse me, I don't recall the exact verbiage, but it would be anything that it's used for commercial transport. If it's a bus that's intended for, you know, inherently commercial, intended to transport, you know, large amounts of people, uh, vehicle with any kind of logo or, or advertisement of a business, that would be inherently, uh, commercial. Or vehicle that's used for a commercial operation, such as a, uh, an Asplun truck with a, um, what do they call it?
Bucket.
The bucket, yeah, right, bucket truck, that would be inherently commercial. So any of those vehicles, in fact, also any vehicle exceeding 15,000 pounds would also be considered a.
Landscaping.
What about, what about a, um, what about like, uh, those, I don't, haven't seen one in a long time, but they used to see them all over the place, like those truly Nolan little bugs they had. Now that, I mean, that was, that was a commercial vehicle, right?
It's a commercial vehicle, yes.
So even though it's.
Well, what I think the distinction that we need to make on this is there's a lot of people, probably way more than we think of, that own businesses, and the business owns that car.
Right.
I don't consider that a commercial vehicle.
Right.
So I think we need to make that distinction.
Yeah, and I think our code specifically allows that, you know, that if you, if you use that vehicle to do your job each day, then that's.
Yeah, but you don't technically own it, the business owner owns it, or the LLC or whatever, you see what I'm saying? It's a company car.
It's a company car.
You know, I don't see that as, I don't see that as a commercial vehicle.
Right.
I see Joe Blow's dump, dump truck across the street, that's another story.
Yeah.
And to clarify, we do allow, depending on the size of, of the property, either one or two commercial vehicles, and you may even have more as long as they are utilized by someone that resides at the property and, uh, and, and fully screened. So you can have either one or two, depending on the size of your property, without any requirement of screenage. And then you can have more if they're being utilized by people who reside at the property and are fully screened.
Gotcha.
So this is for, a violation would be for vehicles that are just being parked and stored at a property, where you have employees coming, picking them up, and then going to operate a business. That would be a violation. So they, if you have more than one or two vehicles, uh, commercial vehicles on a property, they must be utilized by someone that resides on the property.
Gotcha. Okay, all right. And remember, we're not creating new code here, we're just making it potentially proactive rather than reactive.
Right.
All right, so it sounds like that's on the list. Ed, I saw you putting your hand up. If, if you're going to speak, you need to come up just so we can get on the mic.
Yeah, but he mentioned bucket trucks, and I happen to know three people in the ranches that are landscapers that have bucket trucks on their property, and they use them every day to go do their jobs.
They're fine.
But he just mentioned that they could own, what, two of those, right?
Yeah.
Then he's good.
Good. Thank you. All right, tree removal without permit. What is our thoughts on tree removal without permit?
How often do you see that?
It's not fairly often, but we have run into it, obviously, and just, just so council is aware, there is a, an exemption if a tree is determined to be dead or in poor health, but it has to be, it has to be by cer- certified arborists to make that determination. So, if it is determined to be dead, in poor health, or causing significant impact to septic driveway, anything like that, an arborist is, is able to create a letter to certify that, it actually allows them to remove the tree without the need to obtain a permit from the town.
Hey, Mayor.
Yeah.
From a legal standpoint, I think this should be viewed as number one, like number one, where you say removal of X number of trees without a permit. Clearly, if someone's removing one orange tree because they need to replant or something, I don't think that's what your intent was here. So, you may want to say removal of five trees, ten trees, whatever the number is.
I don't know. December would disagree with you.
I'm sure she would.
Just teasing. I don't know. Like, once again, I don't think we want to change the code. I think we just want to decide whether we want to make it proactive or not.
The way this is written, if someone has a palm tree.
I know, I know.
It requires you to go after them proactive.
Hold on, a palm tree, depending on what kind. If it's a royal palm that's native to Florida, it's not an exotic. You'd have to have a permit. If it was a robo-lini which come from the Middle East, you could hack those down without a permit.
Is that, is a robo-lini on an evasive exotic list of the state of Florida?
I don't know if it's on the list. I don't have my.
Well, the first thing we got to decide is what are you going to call a tree? Because a palm is not a tree.
Well, yeah.
Why is it called a palm tree then?
We call it a tree, but it's not really a tree.
It's a tree under the gun.
Dude.
All right, well, let's not, remember, we're not, we're not, we don't need to debate the, the ordinance. I saw. We don't need to debate the ordinance. We're just debating whether or not it's proactive or not.
I, in my mind, if, if they can handle this as part of their workload, it makes sense. If there's something we need to throw out because we can't get enough work, back to your prioritization, I put this a little lower.
Yes, so do I.
So.
So do I.
But if we don't have a lot of cases, it might not be a burden on the code enforcement team.
Yes, the tree removal is not a huge issue or a very frequent issue we encounter, so this would not be a huge burden to our department.
I think most tree removal complaints come through the, the five of us up here, as opposed to them spotting it or anything like that. Usually, it's a neighbor call.
It's a neighbor, yeah.
Kind of deal.
All right, so let's, let's kind of put that one at the bottom of the list anyway.
Yeah, especially since invasive exotics are exempt, and you see that in parentheses. There's a lot of people who don't know what a curlyleaf maple is versus a live oak.
Right.
And they might call the curlyleaf maple a live oak, and it'd be a complete waste of their time, you know?
Right.
You know, as far as that goes.
Okay. All right, open burning.
I'm good with that.
That's a danger. That's.
Yeah, open burn, that's, well, that's a forestry thing, but the, the real question is, are we okay with fire pits or in a burn barrel?
Absolutely.
Yep.
I mean, I think everybody up here has got a fire pit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I got two.
But once again, we're not, we don't, we're not changing the code. We're just saying whether it's going to be proactive or not, right? So, if, if, if something wrong with the code, that's another discussion that we can definitely have, but tonight, it's just, do we want this to be proactive? I think this is near the top of the list for me.
Yeah. Mayor, Mayor.
Yeah.
Can the Florida, who is it that issues, the Forestry Board, they can issue a permit to a resident to burn? How do they do that and precede or, or, or take precedent over the town? How does, how can a resident go to them and not come to the town?
I. Well, it says without a permit, right? And that's just the way the law is set up, Jim. That's just the way it is. You know, that they get the permit from the Forestry Department, and the Forestry Department, from my, what I hear, is getting better about notifying us
Okay.
when that is in fact happening, so that's good, so, so we won't be.
That was brought up at the Fire Board a couple of times, mentioning that.
Just for the record, guys.
Yeah.
The Forestry Department, before they issue a permit, goes through several parameters. They check the dew point, they check the humidity, they, there, there's like twenty factors involved. Wind, rain, et cetera, where you're going to burn it at the location, what equipment you may have available in case it gets out of control.
Yeah.
You know, there, there's a, there's a lot more other than just saying, here.
Yeah, good.
Go burn.
Good.
They check, they do, that's their job. That's why they have that job.
More thorough. Okay.
Good. Okay, so that one would be up towards the top. Previously, previously addressed complaints, which fall, this one is probably my A number one.
It's a big one. That's like my number one. Yeah, my number one.
That's, nothing, nothing annoys me quite as much as, you know, somebody that didn't comply, said they're going to comply, and then go back and don't comply again. Yep.
Here's one, here's one I'd like to add, since we're at the bottom of the list, and that is our noise ordinance. I'd like to make that proactive.
Not going to get any arguments from me. I don't know. That's a.
I mean, that's, that, that's like one, that's one of our, next to speeding.
Yeah.
That's right up there in the top three, you know, across the ranches.
Yeah, I don't know, Julio, why that was not on the list, if that is more difficult to.
Well, Mayor, my.
Or is that more from a, I know DVPD generally is called out in those situations?
Right, so my question to that, Mayor, would be, as far as being proactive, does that mean if we receive a police report indicating that there was a noise violation?
You do that now, don't you?
Well, yes, but, but that, that's kind of my point. I don't, I mean.
I think, I think what it means is we glue a, a meter on the top of your car and you drive around it until it goes. I don't know. I, no, I think it means driving around, listening to see if there's, if there's, I guess, I guess what it really means is the weekend guy or, or a person, whoever is out there, as they're driving around, if they come across a party that is exceptionally loud, that they would take action on it as opposed to just driving by and waiting for a call from DVPD.
Yeah, they could do that while they're looking for the dark skies, Steve.
Yeah, I mean, I think they would give DVPD a call and say, listen, I need your help to do this. So, think about that one.
I think it's a good one.
Yeah, I, I don't, honestly, I don't see you guys getting called out that much. I think you're more after the fact because the police would respond to it first.
Correct. I, I agree. That's, that's why I don't know that we, I don't, I can't recall many instances in ten years where I've been, I've been driving around and I experienced a noise violation.
Yeah.
It's.
But this also, this also protects the people that are calling it in.
Yeah.
I'm looking at it.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think, but I think we're trying to work the mechanics of how, how would it change? What would, what would you expect code to do, I guess?
Well, if they, if the police weren't already there to call the police out there.
Yeah, I think that's what they'd have to do. The code would not be the first, they would notice it, not notice it, that's a technical. They, they, they would recognize that it was occurring, and, and rather than a resident calling DVPD, they would call DVPD.
It's, it's probably going to be far and few between, but I think having you, you guys and having the ability to do that would help.
No, most certainly. I mean, if council directs us to do that, that's one of the things we, where we could remove a resident from having to complain, so we have no issue doing it. I just don't know how often we're actually going to.
It may, it may not be one, one or twice a year. I don't know, you know, because mostly the police get called out first, and then you're secondary.
Yeah, we generally aren't working nights on the weekends, which is generally when, you know, parties occur.
Late night or, you know, something to that effect. But I would, I would like to mention that, you know, and we all see the same police reports, the noise complaints that come in. A lot of times, DVPD knocks on the door, says you need to turn down the volume, eighty percent of the people, ninety percent of the people comply.
Yeah.
They turn it down.
Right.
And it's over and it's done with, you know, and it doesn't go any further.
Right.
It's the ones that say, yeah, sure.
And then ten minutes later, it's back.
Then they, yes, to get involved.
In those instances, Councilman, we, we do already cite them. If we do receive a police report from the police indicating that they were told to turn down the music and they haven't, we would proceed with a straight to hearing.
I would just like to have the ability, if you have, if you have a code enforcement officer out there and, that they can call the police and, and if they're not, to, to turn it down.
Sure. All right. Any, let's go on to the next one. Clearing of the property without a permit.
That's pretty important.
That's pretty important.
You see that all the time.
And I think it's pretty, it's pretty out there.
All the time.
Also something that would be very difficult for one neighbor to report on another neighbor.
That one, if you go all the way up to the top on number three, filling grading, the two are compatible.
Yeah.
So, I don't, I don't really know that we're adding anything other than.
Clarifying.
Mayor, to be honest.
Yeah.
That one is, generally would be doing the property owner a favor. You know, lots of times, we, we save people from incurring fines from, from the county. You know, if they've, if they have a potential of impacting wetlands, lots of times, we stop someone from the work and kind of find out later on that there were wetlands on the property which were avoided, you know, based on the fact that we acted, so.
Right. Okay.
Lots of times, that would help the property owner.
So, I'm sensing this is probably a pretty high priority?
Yeah.
All right. Leniency on vegetative bulk placed out too early following a significant event. Somebody tell me about that. What are we, what are we trying to do there?
Well, Mayor, I think that, and, and number one up at the very top are pretty much, I mean, over the limit, placed out too early. That could probably be tied on to the end of that.
But I guess that's my question. If that one's talking about it being placed out too early, and the one below says be lenient on it.
I can explain that one, Mayor.
Yeah, I don't get it.
Something that came up with, between me and Andy. Okay, we had a hurricane that came through here a while ago that was not our, and hit us, but we did get significant wind gusts, and.
The mic.
Sorry, we did get significant wind gusts, and a lot of tree limbs were broken, busted down, things of that nature. And people who were, had bulk in the next couple of days was no big deal. They just put it on their bulk pile. But the people who are two, two weeks away, what are they going to do with it?
Right.
Has to be put out.
At the discretion of the town administrator, if there's a significant weather event, he should be able to, just on a temporary basis, waive, putting out bulk early.
Right.
Within the limits of what the bulk is.
Yeah.
Because we've had a storm event that came through. I mean, we've had some pretty good blows.
Sure.
That are, you know, and that's what this is addresses.
So.
More lenience. It's not, it's leniency. It's not, in other words, he's going to tell code enforcement.
No, I get it.
Sunshine Ranches got really hit winds, so.
I get it, but I don't know why it's on the list here. In other words, this is proactive versus reactive. To me, that's a policy change that makes a ton of sense, and I, I support what you're saying, but I don't.
Andy put it on the list.
I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a, we don't want to be proactive about.
He put it, he put it on the list.
Let's, let's just.
This is actually going the other way. This is, that's proactive.
Yeah.
But it, it balances out certainly some of the other things on there. This is not going to be time intensive. In fact, it'll save code enforcement time if, if we're able to give that, that declaration. It, it's on here really because as, as we're discussing code enforcement, I, I wanted you to be able to kick it around and say, yeah, that makes sense or it doesn't. We think it does. That's why we added it here.
I think it does make, I think it does make sense so long as it is a specific decision made by the town administrator. I don't want to just leave, hey, you know, we had a big, you know, we had a big storm and, and therefore, you know, I don't need to worry about.
No, that's the person who has to make the call.
Right.
And then he has to make the call and then inform Julio's office that he's made the call that this section of town, if there's a bulk out early, is justified.
Yeah, and get it out on the website or something so people are aware.
It's got to be communicated.
It's got to be communicated through the town talk and things like that, so it gets out there.
Yeah, because we've had several people that have put out after significant, and they were cited by code for having it out early. And they, I, I got, I got several phone calls.
Yep.
Enrolling oaks concerning that. Like, hey, I got all these palm fronds everywhere, you know, blah, blah, blah.
Right.
After, after Irma, Hollatee was just mountains.
Yeah.
And tho- those mountains exceed the minimum amounts.
Yeah. Well, once again, I, I, I agree. I agree a hundred percent. I just want to stay on target here. We're talking about proactive versus reactive. I think this is a little bit of a different discussion.
It is.
Makes sense. I think we're all on the same page, but let's not get distracted, that's all. It's getting late.
I have another one.
Let's, let me finish up the last one here, and then, and then it's, go to yours, okay?
All right.
All right, shipping containers. Let's talk about shipping containers.
What's the code now?
We, we use them two ways. We're starting to have houses built out of them. Julio did mention a guest house.
I know, I've seen it.
Now, a guest house or a home that's built out of cargo containers can't be built unless it passes the South Florida Building Code. So, I don't know. We, we can't stop them now unless we say they're not allowed as homes. That's a different discussion again.
Correct.
But in terms of shipping containers popping up in people's backyard, we have a problem. I mean, I got a neighbor who lives right by you that's got two in the backyard in the setback. And, you know, I, I see it driving all around town, so I really think this needs to be proactive, assuming it's observable by the road.
That's why I put it under, when I suggested that, because most of them are all right on the property line.
Right.
The neighbor next door is scared to death to say anything about it, and they're staring at it.
On their property, so they put on the property.
Right.
What is the code now for how many you can have?
The code only allows one shipping container, and it has to be, it has to meet all setbacks and it has to be fully screened.
Forty foot, twenty foot?
Forty foot.
Forty foot.
Yes. Correct, as Andy indicated, unless you have ag. If, if the shipping container is used for agriculturally related storage, so, or for any agriculturally related purpose, and within the ag classification, then they can have more than one.
And that's two, three, four? I mean, is there a number?
Again, within those parameters, no, there would be no limit.
All right, so I'm sensing this is one that we are in favor of making proactive?
Yeah, the, the biggest, the biggest violation I see with them is either, A, obviously the multiple ones, but is the setbacks.
Yeah.
It's got to be, what, is fifty feet from the front property line?
Fifty feet from the front and twenty-five from the sides and.
From the sides, you know, and I usually see them right on the property line and problematic, or right up. We've had several that have been exactly at the front of the driveway.
Really?
Yeah.
Nothing says home sweet home like a good.
It's just a mystery to me.
All right, so I think that's, I'm sensing that's on the list as well, right?
Yeah.
Okay, Gary, what's up?
Last, last item I have is, it deals with signage. That's something that, commercial signage that you see around, big for sale signs, advertising homes, what have you. It's not, non-ag, because ag's allowed to have it, but, but it's just people going overboard with banners and signs that are not, it's not a temporary thing. It's a thing that's up there for four to six months or something, because we don't do anything about it. You know, and the neighbors are too afraid to say anything, and it's ripped and tattered and all that other kind of stuff. He would see, his team would see that driving by, that it's aged or what have you, and could cite that for compliance.
What's your thought on signage?
It's not, hasn't been something we receive a lot of complaints about, but certainly if that's an issue council would like us to address, we can certainly do so.
Would we set a, would we set a limit on size? How big, how small?
Once again, we're just, you know, we're just, the ordinance is out there, okay?
Yeah, there's, there's already an ordinance on that.
Yeah, there is. There's pretty comprehensive ordinance.
Are we in favor of that being proactive?
Yeah.
I think it makes sense. I think it, I think it, you know, it makes, makes the town look trashy.
An easy, an easy one for him.
Yeah.
Because it's not that many, but wherever it's at in a, in a neighborhood, it's a very unsightly thing.
Yep. All right, signage. All right, so. All right, so, um, I think we got a good list here, Julio, we're gonna need some feedback, um, on what it would take to, to do this. Um, from a staffing standpoint, um, we need to, we don't need to be, we certainly not looking to be overstaffed, but we need to be fair to know that we can do this throughout the town equally, and not, uh, create issues. So, I mean, I would bear in mind that I think initially, it's going to be more work, but I think it'll probably, once, um, over time, people will realize what's going on, and it'll taper off, so we don't wanna, you know, staff up to a level that's then gonna taper off and not, you know, maybe we come up with a plan to, to implement these a little bit slower, so that it doesn't, you know, really overtax the staff too much, knowing that we'll get, we're gonna plateau somewhere. So anyway, think about that. Grab Andy, grab Russell, and let's see if we can come up with a plan.
We'll do. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, anything else before you step away? We good?
Thank you, Julio.
We're good, we're good?
Yeah.
Thank you, Julio. Um, yeah, go ahead, Noel, and then Ed, and then John.
We got fifteen.
Noel Hollingsworth, one that you have that we're already proactive on is the dark sky ordinance. I have a problem with the enforcement of it. I have been told by someone who has gotten a certificate of occupancy several times that they're legal under our dark sky ordinance because they have the certificate of occupancy. And all of that was there when they were inspected final, the final inspection.
During the day.
And they've got enough lighting to light up Shea Stadium on their property. And it was there the day they got their certificate of occupancy. Now, CAP, I was told by CAP, that is not their responsibility for those inspections. And no one else has the responsibility for those inspections. So in reality, over the years, we have more violations of the dark sky ordinance than we originally put it in per household in our town. We also have limits on how long you could have grandfathered in. All the big lights that you see, the orange ones, et cetera, on Griffin Road, were all replaced by Florida Power and Light, and they were not supposed to be replaced. The bulbs were allowed to be replaced until they became thirty years old. Well, dark sky ordinance has been in effect twenty years. But they have now, because they're all brand new, on Griffin Road, got another thirty years of life. And I was told that back in the John Kennedy years, that Florida Power and Light was notified about it, and it was asked where that letter was when we passed the dark sky ordinance. That was sent to them, and they say they don't have it. Well, we said back then, and I know that, because I'm the one that brought the dark sky ordinance to this town. It was supposed to be a date where they all turned into pumpkins and were turned off, and now they've got another thirty years of life because of the concrete poles being put in, and they put brand new lights up on top of them. So, and you've got all these new constructions going in, and nothing is done with them.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Noel. Yeah, Ed.
Gotta do our names every time, Ed Goncalos. Uh, after almost forty-five years here in Sunshine Ranches, I still don't know what an invasive tree is. So if we're gonna use invasive tree, whether we can or cannot remove it, I'm going on my own property, I probably got fifty, sixty trees. Can we have something as a resident spells out which trees are invasive, invasive, and which ones are not? Of course, an oak tree, I already know.
Right.
We wanna keep the oaks, but you got ficuses, and you've got malalucas, and ananakin, and beshovias, and I'd like to at least get a list.
There is, there is a very definite list, and maybe, I don't know if it's out on the website yet, but we need to get it there.
Can we, maybe in the newspaper for the ranch?
We can put it, we can put it on the list, but it's, it's, I, I can name them for you, actually, it's curly leaf maple, holly, and, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Let's get the list out on the website or something, yeah.
Yeah, just to educate the citizens, because I really don't, I mean, I look at a tree as a tree, but some of them are becoming huge.
Right.
And in a storm, I'm sure they're gonna come down, so if they're considered invasive, I like to get them out of there.
Right, great. John.
Good evening, guys, I'll make this brief because it is late, John Garrati, one hundred and sixty-second Avenue. Having been cited for many of these things on my own and addressing neighbors' concerns, tell you what I see. So I'm hearing from the majority here, not everybody, that you guys get phone calls from residents, I've been here twenty-two years, and the council starts through code enforcement, looking into who has a violation or not. How about you tell your resident, hey, guys, we have a code enforcement department, why don't you have the, why don't you give them a call? So instead of manipulating code, because that's what I see happening, that it's gonna have clicks, you're gonna have people, oh, I know the councilman, this happens all the time. You guys shouldn't put yourselves in that predicament, some of you guys like this, believe it or not, I know it, because there's quirky people in the world, but you can't have a code enforcement department like this. Another thing, if we're gonna have anything else proactive that, that is not on the list now, you gotta let code enforcement be code enforcement. Julio Medina, LLC, his company or Inc., whatever it's called, has to be able to operate on his own, instead of, oh, wait a second, let me see what our town attorney's gonna say, because it's up to him. Yes, of course you gotta have a town attorney, of course you gotta have laws, but on many occasions, many, and I have a laundry list, that I've seen he can't do his job, I've seen it. So if we're gonna have a more proactive town, Mr. Kozinski is, his residents are telling him, there's things on here, especially work with, done without permit and probably others, we don't want that, we live here for a reason. No, we don't want an unruly town, but we gotta find a happy medium. Not everything has to be an immediate violation, you guys have gotta have some consideration for where we live, meaning we are in a rural area, we're not here to bother people, but we gotta, we gotta let code enforcement operate on its own. He has to be able to make a decision, on many occasions I've seen, and he'll tell you behind closed doors, give me another minute and I'll be quiet. Many times, he has not been able to do his job, and anybody, if, if we're gonna have an individual process, you guys can't manipulate the process. Who wants to be on a, on a complaint form? Guys, you guys know who you are, there's councilmen up here, if you're getting your house paintball, dude, I mean, come on, it's, it's, it is what it is. So I'll make it brief, let's have a three-strike rule, a two-strike rule, let's have a warning system, let's inform residents, rather than code violations and fines, and because we said it earlier, we're, we're not here for that, right? We're not here for fines, that, that's not what the town's set up for, but it ends up that way, so we gotta fix it. Let's have a liaison, let's help code enforcement be code enforcement. I got many ideas for that, I'll volunteer my time to do that for many people. Thank you.
Thank you. The, the goal of code enforcement is not to collect fines, it's compliance.
It's compliance.
It's compliance, it's always been compliance, it should always be compliance. Um, there is virtually always a warning system where we go out there and notify the individual that this is a, this is out of, out of code, and that you need to do something about it, and they're always given thirty, sixty, and usually they're given thirty days to do it, if it doesn't done, then it goes before the magistrate, he usually gives another thirty to sixty days to do it. So compliance, compliance, compliance is what it's all about, it's just when those goals are not met, uh, that fines have to be instituted. All right, all right, so, great job, council, Julio, looking forward to your, uh, the results of your work. And believe it or not, we're approaching the end of this agenda, it's been a while since we were pushing the eleven o'clock hour. Um, we do have some approval of minutes, and believe it or not, um, I have a correction to one of the minutes, the July thirteenth minutes. Um, needs to, uh, add me to it, and, uh, sorry, Gary, you need to be removed from that one. I think they, they got us switched around or something, so, um, so I already went over.
You can't hear it.
Yeah.
I heard all the jokes, I watched the YouTube.
So I would like to amend the minutes of July thirteenth.
Just for, for, uh, purpose of clarification, where it says present, it should say Mayor Steve Bright Cruz is present.
I was there then, yes.
And Councilmember Jablonsky was absent, so we just need to update that.
You were on vacation that time.
I asked Deborah what happened, and she said she did it to see if Noel would catch it.
Ah.
Guess you're getting slow, Noel.
Well, you know, Debbie might have caught it, but she left a little early, so, well, if she didn't leave early, we just exceeded the time.
I make a motion that we accept that change and pass all three meetings.
Thank you. Any other additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none from the public, any additions, corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, if you can please call the question.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed, minutes passed.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Thank you all, appreciate you hanging out all the way to almost eleven o'clock.
Hanging in there.
That piece of paper you were waving around before, can you come on up? Yeah, you're John, right?
Oh, this, oh, this is an important piece of paper.
Yeah, let me see it.
The council meeting?
Mind if I take a picture of it?
That way I can get a copy of it, because I wanna read it based on your comments.
Take a picture, yes, Keith?
Yeah, we gotta help, we gotta help, you know, help us.
Right.